Good morning and welcome. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Lord, we thank you for another beautiful day. We thank you for this college. We thank you for all who represent us. We ask that you guide us and give us the strength to do what's right going forward. Lord, give us travel and grace to and fro. In the name of Jesus who I pray, in the name of whom you make prayer. Amen.
Amen.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of liberty and justice for all.
Good morning once again and welcome. Thank you all very much for being with us this morning. Dr. Furlong, I believe we have some retirement resolutions?
We did.
Danny Part from Seminole, first up here.
I hardly recognize Danny on me. He's up like this for the board meeting. He's usually coaching soccer or running. Danny began his career as a math instructor at Clearwater Campus in 1991. He left the college for a time to work with the college board, academic systems, and smart thinking, and returned to the college in 2007 as a member of the faculty at the Seminole campus, teaching in a variety of modalities, online, blended, and face-to-face. He's a true pioneer in online learning, creating signature courses and introducing the college to academic systems. This is a quote from June White, who was his former program director. She said, "He would be a member of any dream team of mathematicians." He brings enthusiasm and energy to his teaching as well as a deep knowledge of mathematics and technology. And from the Seminole campus, the Seminole campus will dearly miss his Hawaiian shirt collection and the Greek salads the math department has come to rely on for their department meetings. Danny has promised to continue on as the chief organizer and referee for the intramural soccer tournament for life. He has also agreed to teach online as an adjunct and volunteer in the Learning Support Commons at the Seminole campus of St. Peter's College.
Thank you so much. Oh, wow. Sure. It's only been my second board meeting ever here, and I tell you, the very first one, as is this one, I see wonderful smiles, people that are just so incredibly representative of a wonderful college. The support that you have given me for the programs that I've been engaged with here for the last 18 years or so, I just cannot thank this college enough for the type of support, kind of support and compassion that you've had for faculty here in giving us the opportunity to do what we want to do to make students successful. And it's been wonderful, absolutely wonderful. You know, I wish I could continue on this journey full-time, but given that there were some circumstances a couple of years back that has sort of caused me to settle things down a little bit more, I need to sort of stay off the beaten run a little bit more. But thanks so much, everybody, again. And again, my appreciation goes out to all of you who are just doing the best thing for students forevermore. Thank you.
And this next one is for Jane Johnson.
We really didn't plan the colors, but it just worked out that way. This has been a pretty tough day for all the libraries. Jane's been with us for 21 years. She started in 1989, went right around the time when Dr. Anderson, Susan Anderson, was here. She started as a library assistant at the Health Education Center Library. And when Susan lost her former staff assistant, Jane was asked to step up, and she's been there ever since and just done a fabulous job. She's seen a lot of changes. You all know the great growth the libraries have had. It's become a more challenging and complex job, and Jane has just never missed a beat. But more than that, she's really just been like the heart, really, of the libraries. She's never in a bad mood. I think I saw her stamp her foot one time because we were being wasteful and throwing away three ring libraries. But other than that, she is just the epitome of grace. And I had email conversation with Susan, who would love to have been here to see her off, but she said, "That Jane, she could sail paperwork through any department," including hers, Paul. Some were a little harder than others, but that's the thing about Jane is that she's really built relationships all around the college. And that's not something that you can say everybody does that easily. So it's going to be tough to say goodbye, but Maury retired in December from being Mr. Clearwater Campus, and they purchased a beautiful home in the mountains in North Georgia. So she won't be here to volunteer or be bothered anymore. So I wish Jane all the best on behalf of all the library employees.
You're trying to keep Pete talking.
I know.
But I did start in Nevis Carrington era. Some people remember that. And Pam Smith, I know her number is paper and pencil and typewriter employment test. So obviously, there were so many changes just in that area throughout the college. And Mr. Brad might remember in November when Maury retired, he was the answer man at Clearwater Campus. And you were a little worried about that. Well, the question was, when will Jane retire? And he decided it was this May instead of next week.
We want that phone number up in the order. You know, all those answers.
That's the best answer I got. But anyway, there are so many kind, wonderful friends here. That's wonderful. And thank you.
Okay, and Barbara Truitt from Clearwater Campus.
For 18 years, Barb has worked in the Learning Support Commons, and before that, the Learning Support Center, and before that, the Developmental Math Labs, and before that, the Learning Support Center as a student tutor. And for 18 years, she has been working with many of our most challenging students while they took their most challenging classes in math and statistics. And for 18 years, Barb has been a hero to many of those students who succeeded beyond their expectations, who were able to get past that huge hurdle in the road that they never thought they could get past. And for all these years, Barb's the kind of person who works tirelessly, who never takes a break, who realizes that there's always another student waiting to sit down at her desk to drop their problems right in her lap. And for all these years, she's been able to help them find solutions. So Barb, it's time to enjoy that break. Even as you're making plans to return to the LSC as a volunteer, you know, it's a break you will earn. Thank you.
Matt promised me I wasn't going to have to say anything. But I'm going to dearly miss his place except for the time that I am back volunteering. I retired on a Friday, and Saturday I volunteered my first three hours on that final review. Can't get that out of the book there. So it has just been a wonderful experience. And I don't think there's anything as rewarding as feeling happy and helped somebody along the road there. And you get to read that opportunity. Thank you so much.
Special resolution here. Do you need to call someone? Mr. Burke?
Libretty.
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 Actually, this is not a retirement resolution. But this was an idea that came to me from Dr. Furlong. And I know that he probably had a lot of people whispering in his ear to make this public recognition of everything that you do as trustee for the college. I think it's fair to say that if we counted up the amount of hours that you spend and dedicate to the service of St. Peter's College, it probably would be more than a full-time job for a lot of them. And I think it's important to note also that the hours that you spend are filled with detail, with wisdom, and with a great effort to make sure St. Peter's College is always in the best position possible. You have a gift of vision. You have a gift of keeping a lot of us on the right track. And on behalf of the board and on behalf of the college family, I just want to acknowledge that to you. And I just want to read, there's a lot of whereas's in here, but I just want to read the last two whereas's because these are the ones that focus on Ken's dedication to the college. Ken was elected to the Association of Community College Trustees Board Directors in 2001, served as the National Chair of the Association from 2005 to 2006, currently serves on the Trust Fund Board. He also serves as a member of the American Association of Community Colleges, representing St. Petersburg College through legislative work on the Pell Grant Program. Additionally, Ken's AA-ACC contributions through the Commission on Global Education reflect his commitment to the value of a worldwide academic perspective. There's a whole lot of things that Ken does for this college that we don't know about because he does it on his own. He's made comments from time to time where he's up at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, reading minutes, going through documents, preparing himself for meetings. We're very, very fortunate to have him as a trustee.
Mr. Brad, when you do the motion, Pamela Neal wasn't able to do it with us today, so she's part of the resolution.
I'd like to entertain a motion to accept your retirement resolutions, with the exception of Mr. Burke, of course.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Dr. Furlong, any new employees to introduce?
No.
We have four different sets of minutes to approve. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve those, please.
Aye, second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Burke?
I just want to thank Kim. This was a heck of a lot of work that she put into this, and her accuracy and detail in the minutes is just, you know, without a question. So compliments to Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Lang?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
We have a contract to consider and hopefully approve for our new president?
On behalf of the Negotiation Committee, which you chaired, Mr. Chairman, comprised of Sid McKenzie, the attorney for the college, Doug Duncan, the Senior Vice President, and myself, we're pleased to present to you the contract that you will find in your packet. We were charged with the negotiation of this contract by the board after you unanimously selected Dr. Law, who is with us today, by the way, for this process. You gave us directions, and your direction included, keep it simple, keep it straightforward. Involved Tracy Yench, the attorney from Ford and Harrison, who drew the framework for the contract that you had. You asked that in the contract, we recognize the college's commitment to the Baccalaureate program that now exists. And that is in it. We met with Dr. Law and his attorney, Randy Hannah, of the firm of Bryant, Miller &amp; Olive of Tallahassee, excellent attorney. And the negotiations were very professional, very straightforward, very candid. Dr. Law made it clear that he wanted to be president of St. Petersburg College, and we made it equally clear to Dr. Law that we wanted him to be president, and we wanted to reach terms that would be mutually acceptable and fair. We think that this contract that's submitted to you today does that. It is with the agreement that it's being submitted to you today with Dr. Law. And so I'll stand ready to answer any questions. I'm sure Sid would also be available to answer any questions.
Mr. Burke?
Mr. Lang, I know I asked some of my questions yesterday, but can you go through those on the answer especially, which of the provisions on here in this contract? Because we want this contract to look as close as what our senior executive level at the college receives. And I would like you to go through which items are beyond that.
That's one of the guidelines that we followed, Mr. Burke. And if you want to run down the agreement, the term would be slightly different than you would have with senior management just because of the timing involved in where we're at. And so we're running the term from June 7, 2010, to June 30, 2013, which will put it on a fiscal year basis with the college. The duties are, of course, different than you'd have with senior management because you are hiring a president, and that's in accord with those that are dictated by the Florida statutes by this board at recognizing that this is a traditional community college but now having both authority and responsibility for a Baccalaureate program. Compensation for Dr. Law would be higher than you would pay, at least to my knowledge, any senior administrator, but the compensation is in keeping with the advices that were given by Dr. Hockaday to our committee. Dr. Hockaday shared with us when asked, well, how should we go about this process? What should we look for? He said, probably primarily do not remove any benefits that an existing or applying person that you're trying to negotiate the contract with has. And then you would expect to give an increase of somewhere between 7% and 10%. We have accomplished that in what we're doing, and the base salary that he has is within that 7% to 10% range. He's reimbursed for expenses. Senior administration is reimbursed for expenses. The benefits that he receives, in addition to what senior administrators would receive, is the agreement that the college will contribute to a retirement program, deferred compensation program for Dr. Law, for him to design and choose the vehicles that he wishes to use, and that the college will invest up to $85,500 annually in the deferred compensation. In the event that he does not find a program to invest it in that meets the requirements of law for deferred compensation, that money, the uninvested part in the deferred comp, will become a part of his regular compensation. Then he receives all of the senior management benefits but the senior management benefits. It includes retirement benefits, life insurance, sick leave, and his annual leave package is slightly different. It's 30 days annual leave. The others were all the same as you would have as senior management. In addition, Dr. Law requested and had in his prior contract with Tallahassee Community College, 12 days of leave time in which he can involve himself in activities that are, in the long run, for the benefit of the college, but also could be private ventures that he's involved in, such as be a member of the Board of Directors of a corporation that he's invited to be on and has to attend the annual board meetings. He's entitled to keep the compensation that he receives for those type of employment. The college will provide the president with a suitable vehicle, suitable in discussion that we have not reached any, see, we have tried to reach the type of car, but the thoughts were that it would be in the Buick range, Oldsmobile range. I've been corrected and told they go longer have Oldsmobiles, so that shortens the list.
I'm sure we can find him at Oldsmobile.
And the college will maintain it, and he'll have 1,000 miles of personal mileage each month that he can use with that vehicle. He will, starting with July 1 of 2011, and honor before the first day of July of each succeeding year, he will have a physical examination that will be at the expense of the board. Some discussion has been had with me, apparently, in the history of the college, there has been one physical examination under this type of provision that ran into the thousands of dollars. I'm pleased to announce to you that Bill is a runner in excellent physical condition, so I'm certain that his physicals will not run that type of fee. There'll be an annual performance review as required by Florida statute that'll be performed each year by the board. His annual contract is reviewable each year in conjunction with the performance review, and all of the items of this contract are open to renegotiation if the board should choose to do it or if he should choose to do it. The paragraph, "I will reimburse Dr. Law for expenses that he incurs," has been this board's position for years, and I, in my personal discussions with you all, I think is still the board's desire that Dr. Law involve himself in the Fidelis County community for the good of the college, to be as involved as possible. Well, that includes dues and obligations that are accrued by reason of that kind of membership involvement, and the college agrees to pick up those type of expenses. There's a provision for proprietary rights in intellectual properties that Dr. Law may have. It's the same as any employee of the college would have. Termination, I think, is basically the same as it would be for senior employees. There is a provision that in the event that there were an action for termination by the board, that the board also has the right to determine that whatever the cause was that termination might be based upon could be curable. And I guess you can use your imagination as the various things that would be curable. In which event, there's a process that's included here for notice, working out a plan for curing that type of default or problem and short of termination. And basically, I think every other, no, there's one that's probably slightly different in language, legal actions, to the extent permitted by law, and you'll find there's questions as to the extent that this board or any board can agree to indemnify or hold harmless. We agree to hold the president harmless from anything that happens as a result of his actions in the ordinary course of business. Anything that would be in violation of his employment contract, of his duties under the presidential requirements by statute, we would not be holding him harmless for. And I think, oh, we're reimbursing the president for his move down here, which is, I think, customary within the industry for 15,000, up to $15,000 to move to Florida. And I think everything else is basically also included in senior management contracts.
Mr. Burke?
Certainly, I appreciate the efforts of our chair. This is a very, you know, coming up with contracts, it's a difficult process, and I certainly appreciate the efforts of Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Lang. There are parts of this, though, that just because we had such controversy with the last contract, you know, I think we have to make everything so abundantly clear in this contract so that we don't get into situations where, you know, a board five years from now, 10 years from now, is looking at and trying to figure out what our intent was and what was meant by that and how do you calculate something. And I'm going to point to provision 6C, the president shall be provided with 30 days of paid annual leave and 12 days of paid sick leave each calendar year. The question in the last contract is what happens when this money, these days, don't get taken? How many, how much accumulation can take place? Is there any cap on it? And I would like some provision added here that, that basically, this, the untaken days shall be paid using the same formula that we have for senior management. Something, I don't, I'm not saying this in legal terms, but my intent would be to make it abundantly clear what it abundantly clear what provost would get when they retire of unscheduled, of scheduled time not taken, and that's accumulated, will be the same that applies for the president. There's no different standard, because we got into that whole discussion as to what the standard was, and what was legally, and what was different for the president's contract, and contracts superseded other provisions and board rules and that type of thing. And I just want to make it abundantly clear in here, and I don't think this addresses at all the, the topic of accumulated days not eligible for, but not taken.
Mr. Burge, as we discussed yesterday, it's our opinion that this is controlled by statute. The problem that we ran into under the prior contract is we were attempting to do it by contract, and then whether or not that was superseded by statute. We were advised by council that statute superseded it in the first place. If that's the case, I think the board is better off having one that is silent as to provisions such as that, and let the existing statutes, which is what governs senior employees right now, let that govern what governs the president.
And an alternative would be to simply refer to the college rule on terminal pay for sick and vacation, which is, from my discussions with Dr. Law, his intent is to have termination, we can be the same as any other employee, and the same limits as any other employee at the college. And under the law, a community college, or a college now, but under the law, which refers to community colleges, they can't, don't have the authority to do something that isn't either in the statute or in the contract. But there could be a second sentence that simply says, terminal pay for sick and annual leave shall be in accordance with Rule 6H 23.207 of the rules of the college.
Would that cause you any, Mr. Carr, or Mr. Lang?
I would ask the board to consider us putting some clarifying, letting the lawyers determine what the language is, but the intent here. And that would be consistent with the Dr. Law's understanding of the agreement anyway.
Just because on item F, the board ended up paying $3,800 for a physical, I think, a couple of years ago, and I think as part of our insurance benefits, your insurance benefits, I'm not part of it, the insurance benefits that the college receives, that usually is just a copay, and it should be in the area of a couple hundred dollars, several hundred dollars. You know, it says that we're, to the expense of the physical, should be the expense to the board. I'm not even sure if we really need this whole thing of requiring a physical. I'm not sure if that's what accomplishes, I don't know if the president came and said he had the physical and had bad health, what we would do differently than if he had good health. But it's in here, and I think there just needs to be some cap put on, on this. I just hate to see anything open-ended in this contract, just again, because of the problem we've had in the past with contracts. Is there any way we can, could put something in here?
I guess the problem with that is, from, from the college's point of view, I guess the problem with that is if the college is requiring him to have the physical, the college are underwrite. If the college doesn't feel he needs the physical, then he uses physical benefits under the college's insurance anyway, for his own benefit. If you want to pull the, pull the entire provision, that would be one thing, and we could talk about Dr. Law about that, but, but this clause is in there for the benefit of the college, not for the benefit of Dr. Law.
What would you do if the college, if he felt he's not healthy, not much, and what could we do? Can't borrow.
If the college, let me say this, this is typical clause for the benefit of colleges. You all, as the board, would decide what the benefit of knowing his health status is to the college, if you don't feel there's a benefit, that would be your choice. It's in his contract, down there, it was in the past president's contract for 17 years. I don't have any policy thoughts on it. Joe, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, that's not what I'm saying. Clearly, you probably would not have many options, but you do have an option in the contract, in the event that the president is totally disabled, to terminate. I don't know that that's the reason that the board wants to have this type of information on an annual basis, but it is something that could flow from a physical.
I think this is almost a pass-through type of provision in contracts, in most executive contracts. I mean, I think it's just, you don't see this, this anymore, especially with the way, you know, there's, I just don't see any benefit here, that even having this provision in here. And I think it's, you know, potentially, since there's no limit to it, you know, there's no, what type of physical it is and how extensive it is, so you can go from one year, physical costing the board $200, and next year costing us $3,800, just on the election of the, the person. And again, I'm trying to take personalities out of this, so I don't, you know, I'm not looking to say, well, Dr. Law's a reasonable fellow, he's going to do the right thing. This is, I hate seeing open-ended part of the contract here.
Doesn't the insurance pay for the physical?
The answer is, is yes, that there's an annual physical that's part of the college's health insurance policy, which he would have a benefit of. I don't know how, if you had a very extensive, over and above type of health exam, how much of that would be, that would be...
Well, if you went outside the network and did something on your own that would not be covered, or it would only partially be covered, since there are limitations.
Can we... Mr. Gevers?
Mr. Burge, you have the top end of that for $500? Would you...
That's great.
I think it would probably be that. It sounds like his stuff is covered under the insurance policy, but if he wants to do something above and beyond that, they don't want to pay for it, am I right? Does that work?
I guess my only concern is the college's attorney is, again, that it's a provision that is quote, "for the benefit of the college," not for the benefit of him, and to require him to have it and limit the amount that the college will pay for, seems to be contradictory. But that's, that's a hard choice, I mean, I'm...
Well, I guess, Mr. McKenzie, what I'm asking is, is the question you're asking, when he has a physical, when any president has a physical, it's covered under his medical or medical insurance. So this would be an extension of, or an addition to, if they wanted to go up and beyond that.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate.
So then the cost is actually being paid already by the college due to us having medical insurance, and so this is just an addition to, so we can cap this addition, because the person is covered.
That's the college's choice, and we'd have to go back and, I guess, discuss that with Dr. Law or his counsel. But I don't, I don't know that they would have a problem with it.
I mean, Bill's here, he's asking.
Well, as a...
How does counsel be...
It's kind of awkward to negotiate.
No, that's...
I think that's problematic.
I would appreciate that being considered. The other thing is, and this is really for the board, when item G, the president's review, I think this is something we need to be more involved with in the future, deciding the review form, and maybe really even ask someone to give us a various review form for college presidents, and taking a look at which one we feel the most comfortable with. This has nothing to do with the contract, but it gives us a duty, and really, we kind of fill out the form that's given to us, and one time, so I'd like us to be more engaged in the form itself.
And there's a great variety of ways that it's done throughout the system. I used, all of them used to come to me in my role at Tallahassee, so that would be something that we...
I don't want to discuss this during this particular point, but I think afterward we should talk about that.
Okay, call it out. Also, on item I, can we add a line that says, "Report of these expenses shall be given to the board annually"?
I think it's a college expense. I think you can ask, when it's done, that it be reported to the board. I don't believe that's a contractual item. You're just saying that you're going to reimburse, and, and to have it reported to you is how much you reimburse, would be an administrative thing within the college structure.
Of course, it may be done by the foundation, so your point may be okay.
I think it's important to get some type of report of what these expenses are in the course of the year.
I concur. I don't know whether that, that part has to be in the contract, but I mean, we can put it in there. I mean, that's something...
That'll have to be through board rule, or whatever, because I want it, so it doesn't just go away when this board gets, other people get appointed.
Right.
It's like a board rule. I don't think it's a point.
Can we do it a board rule, then, Sid? Would you follow up on that, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The only other item, and I know, and this is really something which has been a touchy point, and really, Sid, for you, it's a touchy point, and for your predecessor, Mr. Henninger, it was a touchy point. And since Dr. Law's here, I think it's important always, when we're discussing your contract, that you be represented by your own legal counsel, and in no way put the college attorney in the awkward position of defining your contract. And that has happened in the past, and it's been a very uncomfortable position for both the board and the college attorney to be put in that position of interpreting the contract. They're really not a party to the contract in this, so anyway, I just want to point, point that out, as just a general comment.
Any other comments on the contract?
Mr. Chair, I have a concern. Now, bear in mind that this contract is to go into Operation June 7th, and there will not be another board meeting between now and June 7th. The direction, as I'm hearing it, is that we go back to counsel, and we won't have an agreement when we walk away from this board.
Mr. Burge? Mr. McKenzie, can we authorize the chair to sign, approve the contract as it's been presented, with the idea of exploring those ideas, and authorizing the chair to give him the authority to negotiate our behalf and sign the contract as...
Sure.
I move that we do that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're good?
We're good.
Great, thank you.
Mr. McKenzie, anything from you? I'd like to entertain a motion to move through some of these agenda items, please.
I move to approve item A1 and 2.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. I just want to compliment the staff on the, these, I'll tell you, the copier rates that we have for our students are excellent. I mean, that's, that's really, I really appreciate your work on that.
Yeah, in addition, we got an observation on Friday that the rates were actually being reduced, so from what we had in there, we got them reduced from Rico, we're going to save another $1,000.
Great job.
Thanks, Paul.
But are rates of the students what we charge, does remain the same?
That's remaining the same.
I was going to say, they're, they're pretty minimal.
Okay, thank you. Moving on.
I move approval of Roman number 9B, C, D, and C.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye opposed. Thank you.
Terry, I don't, I did have a question on this, the clear wire on this contract, and I guess this, this money will be going into the auxiliary fund, is what I was told. Do we have an intent of use for this money?
That's part of the budget. It'll actually become a recurring line in, I'm sorry. Got an assistant working here. It becomes a recurring line in auxiliary, and we have a proposed use of some of it in the budget we're going to talk about, and we'll identify it.
This is an excellent benefit for the college. I mean, this is, it's amazing that the money we're talking about.
Particularly when the, you know, as you reduce the student textbook side of auxiliary in the future years, which we will, this will be...
This could help with maybe the tutoring program?
Yes, absolutely, because it's not popular, we use it less sometimes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to item D.
Move approval, item D1 and 2.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
We would like to do a flyover, flythrough for you of the new veterinary technology building. We've already taken this project to the board. This is the final phase three documents and a GMP, and we, as you know, were able to work with Pinellas County and the foundation to purchase this property, so we're ready to get started. We've got a sign going up, we've got permits moving along, we've got construction ready to get started. We've worked very closely with Dr. Flor, who's here this morning, and I believe Dr. Niketeris is here this morning, if you had any questions for them also. So maybe we can do the presentation and take any questions after that. Michael, we go to the technology.
Just some very general information. It is a new site, it is adjacent to the Pinellas County Animal Services Building on Ullerton Road. It's going to be about a 33,000 square foot building. It's going to house three classrooms, three labs, surgical suite, dog run, offices, really all of those spaces essential to the program. We've also designed the building to allow for a 4,500 square foot addition, so the University of Florida can come at some point in the future, or another program, if that makes sense at that time. Sorry. This is just an aerial view, sort of the shape of the property, about half of it is uplands and can be developed, but are closest to the road. And the green buildings to the right are the roofs of the Pinellas County Animal Services Building. There's already a lot of parallels in the programs, and our students work with them already, so bringing us closer makes a lot of sense, and Dr. Flor has been working on that relationship as well. This is a simple site plan, very hard to see, but the main thing that you can see here is the left-hand turn lane into the facility from Ullerton Road. This is the floor plan of the building. Essentially, when you come in the front door, the office suites are going to be to the right, some edge-on space and medium space to the left, the three classrooms down the hall, and then the balance of all those support spaces and labs to the left. This is a rendering of the building that was built by the architect, and this is just a view from Ullerton Road, sort of an aerial view. We'll be doing a flythrough in just a few slides. This is an image of the front of the building. The finishes aren't built in, they are on some of these items through the flythrough, but the colors aren't represented for both the final palette, it's just to give some sense of the different textures and materials in the space.
No signage, I notice.
Not yet, not yet.
A great opportunity on Ullerton Road.
Yeah.
A great opportunity.
Here's the backside of the building, which is where we'll be connecting to, you know, have that adjacency that Pinellas County Animal Services will allow for the expansion for the University of Florida Ant Service Road. This is a flythrough based on that model. You can see the back half, that's where the dog kennels would be, back towards the left hands. This is the side that's adjacent to the Pinellas County Animal Services Building. And again, from Ullerton Road, wrapping back around towards the front of the building, we'll walk just into the main atrium space of the building. This is going to be a main gathering space and a main hall for the building, so it'll be a lot of good spaces for the students. Really brings in a lot of natural light, there's clear story windows, similar to this building, similar to the natural science and math building as well, so really a great... similar to the natural science and math building as well, so really a great opportunity for the students, the faculty and the staff. They have a very dark, controlled space right now, and this brings a lot more life and excitement into their facility. We're very excited about what we've been able to accomplish here, and I know their program What we did was we walked through the main hall, turned around, and walked back through towards the main entry. So this is the reception area, and we're walking back down.
Very nice.
Very nice.
You had a solid traffic call on Ullerton.
Michael really is.
The program, the building is scheduled to be completed so that we can have classes fall of 2011. Yes, Mr. Burke?
Just two items. First of all, I would appreciate you asking the architect. I know in the downtown center, we have that nice signage on the building, and I would appreciate if they would consider, I know, you know, signage on the building itself that identifies the building, you know, so many cars pass through there, and I still would get one of our, you know, monument electronic signs on that facility, too.
We'll get the maximum amount of signage that they will allow us to put on Ullerton Road right there. We've been working with Senator Jones on signage, college white, so this will be one of those pieces.
Senator Jones, first assignment when you came back from the slide show was to look at signage at all campuses with Susan, and bring us a plan to update, and particularly here at Margot.
Yeah, the vice-senator.
And this is another perfect example where we can get both be useful, but also good effort.
And then I appreciate the information you gave me yesterday on the cost per square footage. I realize there has to be site costs here because this is an untouched piece of property. But I'm surprised that the building cost hasn't gone down more with the building slump. Is that just the trend?
Well, actually, the cost per square foot on just the building here is about $234 a square foot, and that's pretty good. I mean, we haven't seen that.
So that is a reduction.
Cost per square foot, particularly when you consider the fact that this building has a lot of environmental issues, a lot of air conditioning, air movement, that kind of thing, and it's a lab building, and those things apparently cost more money.
And so how's it compare, I think you said the science building at Clearwater, you prepared?
The science building at Clearwater was around $300 a square foot, but remember that site was already developed. The last time I think that we've done something like this was when we started at Clearwater, when we started the Seminole campus, which was essentially a site that had been undeveloped. Everything else we do, we've been putting it on site that has infrastructure in it, utilities, you know, that type of thing, so.
And how's this project being funded?
The project is being funded from public education capital outlay funds, PICO student capital improvement fee funds.
And the money's already there?
And the money's already here, in-house, ready to be spent.
And we plan on, in June, we should start clearing the site and beginning that construction, you know, working through thirteen, fourteen month construction schedule to open for fall classes of next year, so we're very excited that we've been able to accelerate this piece, but it took a while to iron out the purchase of the property, but it's going to come together very quickly as we start moving forward. The other thing is that those numbers that Susan was talking about talks about an anticipated deductive change order that we'll be bringing to you this summer. We have the plans now, the 100% construction documents, which is what we were reviewing today, and those are being bid out. So we'll have that final deductive change order brought to you in the next couple of months, and we'll be able to, you know, give you a better report on the details of the cost per square foot.
I move approval, item D3 and 4.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye, and opposed? Thank you. Okay, downtown.
The next item is the downtown center. We have some shelved out space on the third floor of the existing downtown center. This is where the parking garage was originally located. And Dr. Frimlong asked us to take a look and see what we should do with that space, and it actually lends itself very well for the addition of two classrooms and some storage space, which you'll see here in a minute as soon as the. Okay. And so essentially, we've got shelved out space on the third floor. We will be using a portion of it to build two 40-student station classrooms, and there's a small amount of space left over that for now we'll turn into storage. In addition to that, right above this space on the fourth floor, we have the opportunity to, in the future, go ahead and put a science lab in. So what we'll be doing is putting all the infrastructure, the plumbing and the sewer lines and the utilities for this lab underneath the fourth floor, but above the ceiling for these new classrooms. So we want to get that in place right now, otherwise we would have to come back, beat the ceilings out, and really take these classrooms out of use while we put that infrastructure.
Whether we expect that to take place, actual having science labs at downtown center?
I think that's still under consideration at this point. We do have some basic science labs, and I.
The classrooms would be available for fall, that was the original plan, and then the one or two PICO projects we're likely to get in the next two years, chance from just last week identified was this, the further expansion of this building, and that plus other PICO money we have on hand, I think during the year you'll be working on it.
Correct. And Yvonne has some basic, we found her on Marches here today, she has some basic science classes that she offers down here presently. This will give her a full science lab at that site.
Susan, this is, because this is an issue just not the downtown center. Is there any plan to get science labs at the Seminole campus? Because I know it's very limiting there, too.
We have the addition of some space to the TLC building on our CIP and have had it on there for a couple of years. We've been working with Dr. Oliver to try and do some innovative science labs in those existing labs that he has in the university partnership building, but I think you'll see it come back up again.
I think where we are is that the labs we have now, there's some potential to do more with them in existing space, but the new labs, we need to be part of in addition to that building. That's the next priority for Seminole.
No definite plans?
No, but we are going to proceed with the master plan on all the campuses, particularly downtown and Seminole, and how UPC develops over the years, because some of those things are making a show at the state level, having the space needs. And so we need to address that and the master plan, and then go back to our next round of PICO. But the science labs, you know, anything we can do, the current ones, we have the dollars for that. The only space we have in that building right now is, as they look at it, is the potential within the Bill Law, I mean, the Bill, the Bill Law, the Bill Law building. We made a building for him already. It was a nice ten year building.
You have a lot to live up to, sir.
Make sure the contract's on. But the, the Bill Young building has the potential, there's space, not, it's actually the library has space now, and how that's going to be developed has got potential for faculty offices and labs. So there's some space now we can look at, but the main thing Jim is looking at is a nice addition to the Bill Young building, and that's on the plan. But we need to do a master plan for all our campuses right now, as soon as we can.
I know we're off the topic a little bit, but I was going to ask this question later, it's really more appropriate now. I read in the paper about the potential for the governor's detoying the PICO bill for community colleges, and Posano was recommending he do that. What's the status of that, and have we heard anything?
Well, we've heard, and we've only got one project that's on that list.
Right, and that's Clearwater, right?
That's Clearwater, the new Clearwater project.
Right.
And we had heard from the governor's office at the step break before the governor would make his decision that it wasn't, was not a jeopardy. So we're feeling good about it, but I mean, if he goes in and decides to do the whole list, we're on that list, but.
But is that what you, how you read that article?
That's how you could read it, Art. But there's a lot of projects on that article, and they run from our little 2.7 million and less up to 35, 40 million dollar projects. So I mean, just from past experience, I would expect more selective use of looking at that. How is this renovation remodeling, if it was on the list, I'm hoping we're fine.
Is the Florida Orchestra, are they on the fourth floor?
Yes.
They're on the fourth floor.
Their offices are essentially on the entire fourth floor, and we do have some classrooms already on the fourth floor. This is the third floor, and we have a big amount of shelved space available on the third floor, that you can see from here, but I'd probably say maybe 15,000, 13, 15,000 square feet remaining in what was the old parking garage and then the new retail shops that we purchased and put the five-story addition on, so we'll be taking this space here and making the two classrooms and the storage spaces.
Do you know off the top of your head when the leases are up on American Sage and Florida Orchestra?
I think, I think Florida Orchestra's up 40-year on American Sage, 50-year.
Let me get that specific information back to you.
Thanks.
This is a, this portion of the shelved space, this is the entire building, when Susan was talking, we went through, looked at that. This yellow area right here is where we're focusing on the two classrooms and a little bit of storage space. It's a bit hard to see, but they're overlaid in that space, and this is really the layout of it. Again, two standard 40-student classrooms that match what's being utilized downtown right now, and it's very effective, a little bit of unassigned or storage space to the side of it. And then this is a sample of, or the layout of the science lab, which is on the floor above, so we'll be putting in the infrastructure and utilities to allow this expansion in the future.
Very nice. Okay. Move to approve?
I move we approve item 5, 6, E, and F.
Discussion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Item G, we have a public hearing for proposed changes to the Board of Trustees Rules Manual. I will open a public hearing at this time. Are there any speakers who would like to come forward and speak to these items? Mr. Burke?
Just on the, and I got the explanation, but I was kind of confused about the explanation, and I just was able to read it this morning, the, let me see where my question is here. We're crossing out, hey, how you doing? On the, I knew my question here. The academic average and repeated course, it looks like we're, exceptions may be granted only by the appeal to the campus academic appeals committees being crossed out. And there was one other thing that was crossed out here about the work exception, but maybe that's something else I was reading. Okay, can you?
Yes. What you're referring to is Rule 4.36, which is our main appeal rule, and what we found is that.
The other part was a documented change in conditions of employment was crossed out as one of the criteria. That was the other part.
Okay. 4.36 also housed all of the other opportunities for students to either appeal or request an exception to a certain rule, and the rules were separated. So you could go to the class waiver requirement, and they didn't have to go to 4.36 to find out the appeal. Instead, we just took those things out one section and put them in another so that everything flows together. So if a student is reading about the class rule, they'll also see how do you appeal in one board rule section then to have to find the appeal in 4.36. So we didn't really remove anything, we just moved it over, and we also in 4.36 strengthened the academic leadership to be involved in grade appeals. Usually it was the associate provost, and we really needed the academic team to be more involved in the appeal process. We removed the employment piece as an extenuating circumstance, where students will come and say, well, I'm going to take this course, but because I lost my job and I'm in Week 14, I want to appeal to get my money back or not be held financially liable. And we thought that a loss of a job would be difficult in these times as these appeals came forward, and so we didn't know if that would be feasible as, you know, extenuating circumstance, we'd be giving money back every day with where we are.
And the other question was on the, and this is just a clarification, is our current policy now that if a student receives a C in a course, that that student can take the course again, and if they got an A, then that A would count and the C would not be part of their, but is it now we're saying that if a student earns a C or higher, they can retake that course for the hope of getting a higher grade?
Right.
Is that the problem, or why are we changing this rule? I'm just curious. I agree with what you're coming up with here. It's just interesting that, I didn't even know that was allowed. I gotta say, I was happy.
Well, when I went to school, if we earned a C, we thought that was it and it's over.
Yeah.
But the state and the statutes now will not fund the college, the out-of-state tuition amount, if a student has already passed the course with a grade of C or better, and we will be held responsible for the outstanding cost. So the state stated that a student should not be able to repeat a course in which they successfully passed. We have students who are enrolled or applying to programs that are competitive, and so five years ago, they may take an anatomy course and get a C. That may not be feasible to be competitive, and they want to take it over to get an A. So what St. Pete College's associate provost did, we recommended to the state, could students repeat the course to get a better grade and pay out-of-state tuition for it if they wanted it?
That's good.
And the group declined our recommendation.
Made too much sense.
So now we're at a point where if a student wants to repeat a course to gain better skills, like it's been 20 years and they just want to do better, and they've already made a B and they want to make an A, because a lot of times we think it's a C, but most of the time it's they've earned a B and they want an A, because that's how competitive those selective admissions programs are, that they would not be able to repeat it for a better grade. And we were able to look at the cost to other institutions, and many have this policy. We're not the only ones, we're just starting to implement it.
I hope you all make that recommendation again, though, to whoever the policymakers are about.
That was just two months ago in Tallahassee, and they said no, the group didn't want to do it, so.
That's a good recommendation.
But we have had students who were willing to do that.
What was their opposition?
They just felt that the community college student could not afford it. They just felt they wouldn't do that, so.
It's kind of taking election away from someone.
Well.
It could be their choice.
But I believe that several would be. The one thing that we are going to do is do a better job at the front end, letting students know when you take this course, you really need to be serious about it, and you need to do your best on the first attempt, and to remind them of the resources that the college provides in tutoring and other support services to get them through.
Would you call my son and tell him that?
Yes. I would do that.
I've been saying it for years, it doesn't sink in. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Williams. Any other public comments? Hearing done. We will close the public hearing.
I approve item G.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Onto item H?
I move approval, item H, I, J, K. That's it.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Dr. Frimlong?
I'm going to ask Doug and Jamel to do most of this, but let me just do a couple preliminary comments. I'd like to have someone calm down, I'm going to make a few comments. This is our, this is our overall budget, decided, capital outlay fees to pay package to our operating budget. Let me just say that we feel really good about what we're bringing forward, and we appreciate the opportunity to meet with the board members separately to discuss the details. We were, we came out much better than we thought we would a couple of weeks ago. We were looking at significant budget cuts during the current year, we had set money aside for that, and we were also looking at the possibility of somewhere between a minus 4% to a plus 7%, depending on whether the senator of the House prevailed. By the end of the session in the conference committee, one thing that was really obvious was, as tough the years was, that they placed growth in the community colleges as a priority to get out of the budget situation room. So you know, we'll read some articles in the paper about how tight things are, they really are that tight. We're a little less tight because they wanted us to keep the doors open, and they funded that growth to some extent, not everything we asked for, of course. But at the end of the session, the combination of how Medicaid was handled, how the gaming contract was handled with Seminoles, we came out actually with no budget cuts in the 2009-10 budget. full funding. Our summer growth is going to be between fifteen and twenty percent in the bachelor degree and ten to fifteen percent in the lower division. And the fall, looks like it's going to be our biggest fall ever. That's going to be statewide, definitely here as well. We were expecting up to a million dollars that we would have to come up with in this budget for FRS. Instead, we refunded for our FRS increases. The budget that Doug is going to lay out does not spend the money we've set aside and hold it for next year in case it happens next year. But this year, all the FRS has been fully funded at the state level. The stimulus money is something that would be a concern to me if I was a board member. We have spent the stimulus money, but we've set aside an equivalent non-recurring amount of the full amount for two years so that we actually will not have the third year dip everybody's talking about. We have those dollars available, non-recurring. We could do some things this year with them, but we're, we've taken a hit on that. We didn't improve all the OES. We didn't improve other things that are non-recurring so that we have those monies available and not have a dip next year. Operating costs, new facilities was up more than we had anticipated. And finally, the Bachelor Degree University Partnership Center, five million dollars was set aside for new partnership programs in Kathy Kennedy and Kay Furniston. We'll be looking at some other possibilities to bring some programs in here. University of Florida option, Labanary is something we could look at. The goals we have in this budget are goals that you shared with me in January. We've really moved our stress from, we're still really strongly in the partnership model, but this budget is really leaning anything outside of academic and student services, keeping the door open for new students in a quality manner. The faculty ratio of full-time, part-time is fifty-nine, forty-one in this budget. We had hoped for sixty, forty. We're at fifty-nine, forty-one. So we've covered our growth. We've had to use the tuition increase that legislature allowed us in this budget.
Tom, could you back up there with fifty-nine, forty-one? Would you explain what you mean by that? Is it fifty? Because-
Fifty-nine percent of the student semester hours are taught by full-time faculty. Some of those hours are taught by full-time faculty in overloaded situations, but the student semester hours taken fifty-nine are by our full-time, which gives you the advantage of community work and availability to students, all the advantages of full-time. And then our other side, many of our admins are outstanding and bring outside services to us. So we have a nice balance.
So the full-time faculty member that teaches the overload is included in the full-time and that fifty-nine percent?
Both by us and by the students. That's how the numbers are calculated. The president's salary that we intend to pay our new president, the law did pass, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of that can only come from the general community college program fund. The additional will primarily come from student fees. And what we'll have to do when we do our budget, lump those two together and do our budget, we'll have a piece that shows a portion of state money and a portion of student fees covering the full amount of the contract that's in the middle of approving. And then everything else will be lumped together and it'll show how we've spent our money, our state and student fee money. The budget includes really anything that went through the provost and the budget supervisors that made sense in terms of capital outlet. Was funded through our technology fee. The distance fee that we had two years ago was efficient to cover our needs in the online area, including several advancements. SVD reform occurs in this budget. Doug will talk about it in terms of having more direct responsibility at this management level for where we spend our staff development dollars. The reserves are dramatic. We've done some things for student services out of auxiliary and we've done, we've moved some of the recurring auxiliary into this budget coming from things like the tower leases. But basically, our funds have significant overall reserves. There's reserves in the fund balance being added maximum. And we also have strategic plan money in the operating budget that could be used if, for example, something other than eight percent happened at the state level on tuition, we had money built into the budget to cover that. And again, we have the non-recurring covering and decrease in stimulus. The Men and the Way Program is funded again to re-initiate that program. And the downtown classrooms that we talked about, the dollar green here cover that. In the library area, I may have two or three more. In the library area, we have significant increases in the library, both for books and licenses, but also the, on the textbook side, we're proposing additional dollars for the reserve for textbooks in the library, again, both eBooks and regular. And finally, the, there's a new item in here that Doug will explain and it has to do with vouchers for the purchase of random textbooks that each student would have the ability to have a twenty-dollar voucher towards the cost of their textbooks. We'll do that as an experimental basis this year and we hope to address it formally when we get to the new contract next June and the new president's here, that we negotiate that contract during the year and pick up any of the things we've been talking about. Finally, I'd like to mention tuition in the pay package. We discussed tuition with each of you, with the budget committee and with our cabinet. And we're recommending eight percent in here. It's really what the legislature anticipated as a way to cover, tuition covers over forty percent of our operating budget now. So when they go up that much, we need to really use those resources and look for other ways like the voucher and increase student services for students as a result of that. And finally, on the pay package, my statutory responsibility is to present to you a balanced budget. I think there may well be discussion on the board member on the exact number, but let me say we went through a process with lobbying for, working with the legislature on securing the funds with our budget committee. And they've recommended a number of different approaches from approximately a three percent of the base and a two percent non-recurring up to five, two in their recommendations. The cabinet looked at that, not having had a raise in several years in the base, recommended really a mix among those numbers. There was back and forth. I met with you individually. And so what I've asked them to build the budget on is four point five percent of the base as a number that's in the range of everything I've heard. You have the ability, first of all, I think today, to look at the budget, make sure we've covered everything, that we have sufficient reserves, and then to see if that's the number you can support or some other number. And we're comfortable with your judgment on that one. So if we can't, Doug, it's a matter of interest of specifics.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Members of the board. Dr. Furlock. As you know, we met individually with you and we passed out, I believe Kim just distributed another summary that includes the compensation information that Dr. Furlock just discussed. As Dr. Furlock said, our development of this budget focused very much on our mission, primarily growth and our strategic goals and initiatives and the initiatives you approved a month or so ago. We, of course, wanted to make sure that there was a neutral impact of the stimulus funds loss after this year, and I'll show you a little bit more of that in a minute. We also wanted to make sure that we maintain that conservative fiscal policy by accounting for any possible future reductions. That always comes up in a discussion of the budget right now with the economy. What do you, what are the what-ifs? What happens? How you plan if something does happen? And we also wanted to address textbook affordability issue that has been discussed recently. The, just a few, as Dr. Furlock said, we're pretty healthy financially and there are many factors that have contributed to that. I think what you see on this slide overall really says that we got control of spending. We made significant cuts in prior years. Our enrollment grew beyond our projections in prior budgets. Last year, as you know, we went through a very tedious process of zero-based budgeting where we were able to actually reallocate our resources across the college and achieve a lot of savings in doing that. Another big one that I think we do very well is our management of classroom productivity. Ann Cooper, Dr. Cooper and the deans and provost do a great job of managing productivity. We also have some new revenue streams that, one that we proposed dealing with the auxiliary and then I want to talk a little bit about the technology of distance. And of course, a contributing factor is simply that we've given no recurring pay increases over the last three years. I did a quick count a minute ago with some, some information that Patty Jones provided me and I know about twenty-four, I counted it quickly, about twenty-four of the twenty-eight colleges have given some form of a recurring increase over either one or more of the last three years. And that, of course, has helped us keep our base, our base budget low.
Doug, let me ask the question else that you're bringing up that topic, is we used to have that chart of how our faculty stack up against faculty with the other twenty-eight. And we were for the, for a lot of the years on the top ten of that.
Top five, yeah.
You know, how, have we measured how we've fallen on that because of the recurring increases that other colleges have given and we have not?
I haven't seen a report recently that shows, you know, how much we've fallen, but I'm sure that we're, we're not where we were. I don't think we've fallen dramatically, but I think we're probably out of the top five.
Would that be difficult to put together in the future for a board meeting?
No, we'll be happy to do that.
And also, can you tell me with the FRS, does the adjustments which we've given in prior, the past three years where we've given, can't call it a bonus, but it looks like a bonus to me.
Right.
Does that get included in their base calculation as far as their high five for retirement purposes?
Yes. I mean, we pay the retirement contribution on that money and it counts. It just doesn't roll forward. It's not cumulative from year to year.
But it does count for the calculation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It counts, but if you stay here ten more years, your salary would have gotten higher than that. It doesn't count in the long term. Yes. Okay.
Right. This slide gives you a little bit of an idea of what's happened with our revenue and the couple of things in this year's budget. If you look in, this is our current year and this, I think on your, where you're looking, it's light blue. It's lighter on the one up here. But that is primarily the revenue that we started getting over the last few years for technology and distance. And we've been able to reallocate about a little less than two-thirds of our technology infrastructure expenses into those, into those lines of revenue, which have helped significantly. What you also see that we're proposing this year at the very top there is another line of revenue that would be transferred in from the auxiliary. I'll give you some details on that in just a minute. But our revenue has actually, and this, what you're looking at is without stimulus. That's just recurring revenue that is on the board. So some details. You've got the detail sheet. We met with you, went through it. We, this slide includes both the lower division, our revenue of one hundred and twenty-four million, six hundred and sixty thousand and over expense of one hundred and twenty-four, six fifty-one. The percent, the breakdown in the current budget is that of both lower and upper combined, we're at seventy-three percent personnel expense, a little over twenty-one percent operating expense and about five point five percent capital. Now, you may recall, seven, eight years ago, we were, we were approaching eighty percent on the personnel side and we've been able to keep that down for all the reasons I previously stated. But right now, what the numbers you're seeing on the board and the picture frame that we put in front of you represents that with the compensation piece, the four point five percent plugged into it. And then it shows the balance and we'll pull and force balance that and we'll submit it to the state. To reiterate some of the things that Dr. Furlock said, we, the budget is built on a four percent enrollment growth, lower division. We expect to exceed that, but again, it's a conservative projection. Twelve percent enrollment growth, upper division. A, on the revenue side, approximately one point four million recurring revenue from auxiliary, which as I said, would include what you approved earlier, the revenue coming from EBS lease. It includes the tuition increase, the eight percent, which in per credit, our value is six ninety-seven, lower division and seven dollars and sixty percent, or seven dollars and sixty cent, upper division. And then it includes the four point three percent increase in state revenue that we received. Just a graphical of the lower and upper division tuition on the left compared to what we project USF to be. This would, this would assume that USF approved a fifteen percent increase. We don't know for sure, but that's what their, that's what their capability is. So you can still, we're still a good deal relatively speaking.
So that, USF was given the authority to fifteen percent for lower division?
I believe, right. All the universities-
Across the board?
Yeah, can go up.
Eight percent plus seven percent specialty. Eight percent same as us and then they have the ability to have an additional seven percent to move towards national average over a five-year period. By the way, that's about thirty, almost forty percent lower our provision than USF.
On the expense side, again, mostly tied to growth, the budget includes a little over three million for both academic and student services support, both personnel and expense. And this was a very critical area. The growth, the growth combined with the prior year cuts really hit that side of the house very hard, particularly in the student services area and financial aid area. So we put considerable funding back in there to keep that service up to the level where it needs to be. We, the budget includes approximately a four point four million dollar contingency for any unexpected expense or reductions. And we certainly don't anticipate that occurring, but you never know, but we left that contingency at that level. It also includes a nine hundred and ninety thousand dollar contingent, contingency to fund additional elements of our strategic plan. The budget you're looking at already includes a lot of strategic issues that are covered, but we have some, some project-based issues with our strategic plan that we will address over the next four to six weeks, two months, when Dr. Locke comes on board and we reserve that approximately a million dollars to fund some initial strategic initiatives. We've, as I previously said, been able to reallocate an additional about a million dollars of our technology expense to the technology and distance learning fee revenues. We have maintained in this budget a nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar retirement fund contingency. Now that, we received the seven hundred and, I believe it was forty thousand approximately from the state to fund the retirement. But as you know, in prior years, we had maintained this contingency anticipating a future retirement increase. So we will hold that as another contingency. And actually, our utility expenses have been tracking very well. Susan's folks have done a great job on the energy side and, but we're reserving four hundred thousand of utility expense contingency. We've also got on the non-recurring expense, about four and a half million dollars for construction debt obligation. And Dr. Furlock may want to comment on that. We, I think we mentioned it to you individually, but we have some areas, if you want to go ahead and-
These were just, we did discuss, these were the loans that were potentially to be repaid by PICO, where we built the building in anticipation of that. And it doesn't appear that that, very much of that's going to actually come back to us. Looks to us like we're going to have about a fifteen million, about eight or nine million after we, after we get what the PICO we should get next year. There'll be about an eight or nine million of that where we build, hoping to get the PICO back at some point. That's not coming back. I think new chancellor, new facilities, people in Tallahassee. And so what we're suggesting is while we have to be significant reserves, we go ahead and take four and a half million and get it back into the operating side, not to spend it just to move dollars. If we do that, it'd actually be less than that next year. We would in fact have paid ourselves back.
Which are these projects again, which we built without the insurance?
I may not get them all, Susan, but it was the epicenter, it was the-
DO.
DO, part of epicenter, district office. It was some of downtown, which is the one we hope to get back.
Downtown, we believe it's, there was some Seminole.
Yes.
I may not guess. Make sure you said the right one.
Yeah.
See, specifically, it was the site acquisition for the DO building. It was acquisition and renovation to the Annex Two building, which is on the north side of the district services building.
Do you have a balance next vote, Susan? If you don't, you can take them later.
I, I do. The, let me see, site, see, the site acquisition at DO is four point three two zero seven three seven and seventy cents. The, the DO renovation that we did there is two million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six- I, I do. The, let me see, site, um, see the site acquisition at DO is 4.320737 and 70 cents. The, um, the DO renovation that we did there is 2,478,674 dollars and 29 cents. Annex Two is 1,882 dollars, 746 and 54 cents. And the item that was never contemplated to be paid back from PICO, but nonetheless is the addition in seminal, and that's 1,392,885 dollars and 52 cents for a total of 10 million, 75 dollars, 10 million, 75, 44 dollars and 5 cents.
What was the addition in seminal?
Uh, 1 million.
Yeah, what was it?
Oh, it was the addition to the library, essentially the government institute conference, government institute conference.
And we do have the potential, appropriate time to look at the 8 million dollars we have in the foundation and what, what that budget's going to be. So there's the potential there to charge back some of the cost.
You mentioned Annex Two. Is that downtown?
No, Annex Two is a building that is the north side of the district services building, which a portion of it is occupied by the Juvenal, well, their board.
Downtown is in this mix somewhere too.
Downtown is in this mix, but downtown, we will have paid all of the money back from PICO.
Yeah, anticipate that. We don't have it in the bank.
So we'll get, PICO will fund our whole downtown thing is what's anticipated?
That is what is anticipated.
That's very good.
That's been told closely right now.
The chancellor, I, I kind of, being interim, I was, said, where's the money? My God. And kind of threw a little like, oh, my God, you know. And so they did come back and say, those were interesting, interesting times, interesting approach. It might happen, but PICO's so tight, we're not able to do that. They actually mentioned that to Dr. Law as well when he was in town. But they did come back and say, because of all that, they moved a few projects and this was one, was the downtown. So get that covered. And what was the other big one? Was it part of, it wasn't Tarpon, it was the?
Well, there's 2 million for Annex Two building and there is some site acquisition for downtown that they're going to pay for also.
That's okay. So that was it. And then?
Who do we owe this money to?
Ourselves.
Okay. Which fund? The auxiliary fund?
The week fund 10.
Fund 10 paid for this?
Yeah.
Yes. So, so which fund is paying?
Fund 10 would, would pay it.
And where are you paying tax, where are you paying tax from, from us there?
At this point, just fund Dallas. Just fund 10, fund Dallas.
So fund 10, who is this fund 10?
Yeah, it's, the, the loans, I, I could let, Teresa's putting some scenarios together, but the loans are on the books in the fund 70, sock of house.
Okay. Maybe that's just something Teresa, maybe even give me a call later and we just talk about. Like, I just feel like some understanding of where the money go to and like.
Yeah, I've asked Teresa to put some, several scenarios together so we can show her.
And that's where, I think one's, one of the bottom lines of all this is when Teresa has her audit, she needs to stay there than hanging out there and that's the fund. It's all back to the, it's all back to street fund and I didn't fund 70 account.
Okay. I, I mentioned the, the auxiliary line of, of revenue that we've inserted into the budget and just a few of the highlights. We proposed 500,000 for student textbook rental purchase vouchers, approximately 20,000 for additional eBooks and hard copies on reserve in the libraries, a little over 200,000 for new library books and periodicals, an assistive technology specialist to help in the disabled student arena, 29,000 for the ethics bowl and related activities. And we've always had the 300,000 for student assistance in there, as well as we added 113,000 for senior citizen tuition waivers. I have met, I met with the bookstore manager. We, we talked about the voucher issue a little bit, so we're going to come back with some specifics on how to manage that. But right now, that amount is in the budget.
And that's 20 dollar, 20 dollar voucher per book. Is that it?
Right. We, we need to, we're going to develop a plan that keeps us within the 500,000. It would be 20, a 20 dollar voucher for each student who registers per book.
For a book, not per student, right.
Yeah, pretty well.
Say that correctly.
I think you said wrong. If, if one 20 dollar voucher.
Right.
Each book, each student.
Each student, right.
But it could be more depending on how, how student lives.
Yeah, that's why we want to come up with a scenario to make sure that we don't, you know, overshoot.
But, but this is different than, if a student's going into the, the bookstore and buys five books, what's his voucher?
20 dollars. They're giving a 20 dollar voucher.
Well, there's, there's something like, was it 32,000 or was that 30?
32 headcount approximately.
32,000 student headcount. If they all showed up and did the one book, it's like 600,000. But we never have anywhere near that amount of people using the bookstore. So for the half of that, this could go to two books. But that's what they're trying to work out for specific and bring it back as part of the June meeting.
Okay. So it doesn't matter if the students buy one book or five books, they get 15 dollars. That's one voucher per student.
Yes. Yeah. And that's, that's the pot of money where we have 11 million. So when we bring it back, that's not sufficient. We can talk about that. But this, this has now got the 500,000 in the budget up to that. Anything other than that, we have to be a budget amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
On the auxiliary budget, in addition to what Doug just mentioned, you have the details of all of it, including the additional revenues that you approved in the CBA. So the budget revenues are 2 million. We've got expenses budgeted in auxiliary to 48 million. So what that's budgeting for is about $900,000 decrease to the fund balance in auxiliary. And that's mostly because we have a couple of these non-recurring items that aren't being built into recurring. One being 500,000 for student vouchers. And then the other, right now, the 400,000 is just an estimate. We've been utilizing auxiliary to help balance the Palladium budget for the past few years, but we anticipate that going away. So that would be considered a non-recurring item.
This is something we probably need to take a look at another board meeting, but the Palladium and the, the International Museum, which I think phased out, and the LIPA Ratner have been, goals of making them self-sufficient. And I'm not even sure what's being loaded into those budgets. If, you know, we have a director, assistant director, all those, are, are those being fully loaded? So are we, we know, are we, are we, are those act, are those losses more or are they less or?
I, I don't know. That is, that is a June workshop. And they're more, and, and they're more, and, you know, we're committed to it. They're more, but we can make some policy decisions. And we want to show you how much more until you can make a decision.
And can you let us know what, all the component costs are?
Absolutely.
Because I think that's important to that.
Yeah, we nailed that one thing to you a couple, about two months ago. And we want to, for fleshing it all out for a full discussion. But a good bit of it is FIM, so the decision on FIM is important. But, but LIPA and Palladium are losing. And the quick answer on the Palladium is there's a, I think it's almost 5 million that we had in, in the foundation and that dipped by whatever, a third when the budget went down. It's almost back to what we got. Anything above 5 million, they can start helping towards those expenses. But I mean, they haven't helped at all yet. We can do it out of auxiliary. Expenses operating those arts and songs.
Are you going to give suggestions, recommendations, staff recommendations on what we should do?
Well, I should ask that. I mean, we, we tend.
I think that'd be good. That'd be helpful to me. I'd rather have something well thought out than have something up here and winging it.
Yeah. I, I think that'd be really helpful to the board to see that layout.
And also, I guess, would you also give us kind of a brief synopsis of how, how the Palladium is, how, how much usage it has?
Yes, we'll do that. I think on, when I, in your individual packet, there's a longer legal size sheet that shows the actual breakout of those areas you're talking about, the budget and the expense, so you get a good idea.
The staff and program development, which is part of Fund 10 and vital operating budget, is 1.1 million in revenues this year. We maintain, even though it's not required, taking 2% of our program fund that we get to allocate for staff and program development. So that's why it's been increased to 1.1 this year. We have two positions that we fund from this part of the budget, the staff and program development coordinator position and curriculum director. And then the remaining 970,000 is what Dr. Furlong was referring to, that this year, we've kind of taken that up to a higher level and we're allocating that back down across the college to appropriate business units. The student activities budget, both lower and upper division, the lower division budget is set at 3.7 million. The expenses are very close to that being a balanced budget. Our expenses do include a $250,000 reserve to ensure that we don't run over. Also, we base that on a 4% increase in enrollment. The areas that we have really targeted to, to grow are we allocated, using the 4% increase in enrollment, we use that to increase the current expenses for all the different campuses to have more money available for student activities. We also have funded actually two positions related to the male outreach initiative. One's funded through student activities. The other's funded in the Fund 10 operating budget. And we've also allocated $30,000 to current expense related to male outreach. And we've added a new student activities coordinator position, a budgeted position in downtown based on that growth. In upper division, the revenue is set at 630,000 with expenses of 626,000. And that maintains their $200,000 reserve that we like to have.
The last item in here is just a synopsis of, of our self-funded insurance plan. And this is a very broad overview of it. But as I mentioned during our meetings, we project our claims expense at a little over 11 million dollars next year and about a little over 800,000 on our, our group dental. Total expense is a little over 13 million. So you can see we're running, the cost of that program, we're running over a million dollars a month. We, the, the best thing though is that we do anticipate when we close this year to have a little over 10 million dollars in the reserve. And that is a separate reserve from any other reserves or contingencies I mentioned. So about 10.3, 10.4 million will end the year with that reserve.
Thank you. Mr. Furlong, I certainly appreciate the, the energies put into this budget submission. I think y'all have done a superb job with it as you usually do. And I'm certainly supportive of the 4.5% increase for the employees of our college. I think it's good. It's also cutting across every element of the college, that the, the clerical staff and support staff and administrators and faculty are all receiving the same. I think that's important. I think that sends a good message there too. And, and I appreciate your efforts that you had to go in to make that happen because it's been three long years here of, of no, no increases. And we, we need to, we need to be competitive with other colleges. We need to do the right thing. So I certainly appreciate and supportive of Dr. Furlong, your leadership in this area.
Any other comments?
I move approval of item Roman numeral nine, Ellen.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mine's will do M also approval since it relates to, we can't do one without the other.
So Ellen, M, second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, thank you very much for the staff. We're, we're very, Dr. Newberg?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. And this is the board, Dr. Furlong. It's my honor to share with you information about what the Honors College and programs have been accomplishing over the last three years. I actually became the director in March of 2007 while provoked the Clearwater campus. So I began working with the then Assistant Director Nadia Devstegniv Yeva. If I got that right, Nadia. And what we wanted to do was create a vision for the program. So first of all, I recognized that we needed to give the program a college-wide perspective. It had built a foundation of a Department Springs campus, but being so far north, a lot of things were not coming south. So that was one of our first goals. And since the Gen Ed deans that came into place, they have greatly assisted in achieving this goal. We also wanted to strengthen the academic depth of the program by providing opportunities for scholarly achievements beyond the classroom, such as using our co-op work experience, research opportunities, and broadening what we were doing in service learning options for our students. We wanted to increase the number of honors faculty and also streamline the process for becoming an honors faculty member. We wanted to increase the number of honors courses and engage the four-year programs in participating in an honors option. We also wanted to institute a formal honors symposium for our students and faculty to exchange their ideas and for the students to present their research, which could then be chosen to represent St. Petersburg College in the regional and national conferences. This year, we're also investigating the possibility of an honors option within some of our health-related programs, such as nursing. We have found that the early college students are often interested in the honors program. And in fact, what we're seeing is that many students are beginning to recognize that spending the first two years in an honors program can be an advantage to being accepted to the more selective schools for their junior and senior years. For example, this year, we have had one of our early college students who completed our honors program and accepted into West Point. None of these ideas, of course, would come to fruition without the dedication and hard work of our previous assistant director, Nadia, and the commitment of our faculty and students. Nadia has served as the assistant director since 2004 and was recently promoted to director of the honors program at St. Petersburg College. She has served as a faculty representative for the Florida Honors Council. She has been a member of the External Relations Committee of the National Collegiate Honors Council. And last year, she chaired the Southern Regional Honors Council Conference and was recently elected as vice president of their board. It is my pleasure to introduce our director of St. Petersburg College honors programs, who will now share the successes accomplished over the last three years. Nadia.
I'm Nadia Devstegniv. I'm very pleased to be here, dear members of the Board of Trustees, dear President, Dr. Furlong, and dear future President, Dr. Law. I'm very proud to give you an overview of our achievements of the Honors Education at St. Petersburg College. I want to take you briefly on this honor journey and describe what is the character of the honors students and honors faculty at SBC. We have six and a half years' experience here, and I produce annual report, which is intensive, intensive writing document consisting of 50 pages. And this report is available for students and faculty to see. What you have in your package is a short summary of 15 pages. And I also brought a powerful presentation to illustrate our success in honor. I hope that you will be able to understand and enjoy with me this little journey. Honors program, had a mission since establishment. We build intellectual learning community of our students. And we invest and encourage students' creativity and global perspective, as well as leadership qualities through a lot of educational opportunities to provide to our students. The last three academic years for the Honors College were very successful and we're proud of our significant accomplishments. Honors students' achievements will always be the main measurement of our success and our development in the future. At the college level, I want to emphasize how significant it is to provide for our brightest students these opportunities. Because these individual, individuals, they contribute the most to us, to our society as future scientists, educators, doctors, entrepreneurs, and artists and politicians. We offer challenging honors curriculum to students based on interdisciplinary approach, based on class discussions. Our small classes consist of 15, 18 students and will provide very important benefits to students in the program. All the benefits are listed here. I just want to say how important they are to the students. And I want to start with a scholarship, which has been named and provided by Board of Trustees in the beginning of our program. We offer over 160 scholarships, honors college trusted scholarships to our members. Students receive any and it's important tremendously. You can read the quote from one of the students in the program, what the impact she hasn't had education by receiving this. her education by receiving this amount of scholarships. Not only students receiving scholarships through the trustees, they also have a connection and with relationship with the foundation office, and our students were able to receive and win national scholarships. For the first time, because in Petersburg College, this year, we have two scholars, gold and silver Coca-Cola scholars. The students receive a special, over $1,000 scholarships to attend upper division four-year schools. We also have students receiving a tremendous amount of scholarships through the US State of the Community College Academic First Team and Florida Team. Every year, we have up to 20 students receiving the scholarships, and we should support them by writing recommendation letters, by guiding them how to submit their application for the scholarships. This year, we have also Truman Scholarship nominated, this is a scholarship for the graduate program, and the student who was at USF, our students, and in Fisher, she was nominated, a freshman student, received this scholarship, but it's a very high nomination, and we follow our students through their success in the Florida schools as well. We have ETK transfer scholarships, and this is all very, very important foundation for our, for honors college students' success and honors program students' success. I proudly would like to name that our students are representing us at the stage every year at the graduation as the nominating finalist of the honors, of the APOLOR Award, which is the highest prestigious nomination for students. You can see here, since 2006, which was our official first graduation for the honors program, we have the finalists who are representing the honors college, this is amazing. And one of the finalists, you see, Mindy Tatra, she was also the first time in our history receiving the Florida Association of Community Colleges Award, which is, this award named Leroy Collins Against the Odds Distinguished Community College Award. She received it last year, and this year, again, we have Samantha Mitchell, our finalist. This student is going to develop nuclear engineering, nuclear engineering program at University of Florida, she's already accepted by Manoscopes, but she selected to go to the University of Florida, because again, our students are not exceptional, they still have financial needs and they need to stay in the state. I also would like to highlight recognitions by receiving, our students, as you know, they're quite ambitious, they need recognition, they are very vocal, very articulate, and I, we have established in honors program, special awards, which is presented at the students' spring award ceremony called Honors College Scholars of the Year. And I attend every campus ceremonies and present proudly this plaque to the students and describe the students' accomplishments in front of the faculty and students and families every year. And also, we have most dedicated students over nomination for each campus, for students who are contributing the most for the service learning and service for the community. Briefly, I can say that we have currently in honors program over 500 members, and our increase overall over the three last years is 35%. We also have honors enrollment increase, and this increase is annual average 6%. You can see it on the chart. I'm expecting high increase of the enrollment this year, but we offering honors curriculum on each campus, and currently, it's quite limited, the number of courses, we offer about 50 honors course per semester.
Nadia, as a student who takes an honors course automatically part of the honors college, how does a person know, like this 500, how does a person know they're part of the honors college? Is it an application process?
Sure. I would be happy to explain it to you, because this is a critically important issue. There is a criteria of developing honors colleges in the nation, and I follow some industry all the time, as I said, I am part of the National Region Organization. We do have application process. Our students, if they want to join the honors college, which is the highest recognition for the honors program, they need to go through the application, they apply with the application with a writing essay, and they submit two levels of recommendations from the faculty if they are currently enrolled in SBC courses, and they have to complete the first semester with SBC as well, in order to introduce themselves to the faculty. But if students are joining the honors college from the high school, we have a little bit different application, have two applications in place, they're available on the website, and the freshman application will require students' transcript, essay, writing sample, and application as well. Once we receive the package, I also meet with students, and I have students, current students in honors college who have that appointment with them as well. So they receive the acceptance into the program separately from their St. Petersburg college acceptance. That's how the honors college operates, very important process for students. When I said we have honors members, we, currently, our program is relatively small, but that's average size, actually even larger than other schools. Our current students' membership is 250 in the honors college, but in the honors program, we also count students who are taking, enrolled in honors courses, they are members of the honors societies, and we track those groups as well.
Does there, is there a degree that they get awarded from here? Have any designation showing those from the honors college?
Yes, definitely. We have a, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it to you, but when students are receiving their AA or AS degree with St. Petersburg College, we have a special message on the diploma, that they receive the degree with honors college, with the condition if they have completed 18 honors credits, they were members of the honors college, and they maintain 3.5 GPA. That's one recognition. Another recognition, students are able to receive honors certificates, which is 11 honors credits, GPA of 3.25, and also, I forgot to mention, students receiving recognitions of diploma and certificate, they have to be involved in service learning projects. They have some mandatory requirements in the curriculum for them to take honors course. Honors centers doing seminars, and we track this group, and we communicate with central records when this designation is approved, so it's a process.
Nadia, one more question on that area. If a student is at the honors college, and I know they have classes with less students than the honors class, so if they're taking five courses, only some of those courses are honors courses, which are those, and then they may be taking two other courses which are regular courses, is that how it works?
How it works, we require our members to take at least one honors course per semester. And these courses are, this is not additional courses they are taking, it's part of the general requirements or elective honors curriculum. Students have to take one course, and if they don't have this course in the curriculum, for example, we have a special option for the students to sign the honors contract in regular class, and work independently with the faculty in that class. It's take a lot of efforts from the whole triangle, faculty, our office, and students, but it's really enrich their experience.
And do each of our campuses offer these honors courses?
Each campus, absolutely. We coordinate each campus curriculum, we work with faculty and honors advisors, so this is a, this process in place, take some intensive efforts here. And I want to share with you a little profile on students in terms of their academic and graduation rate. You can see on this chart that our students, first of all, it's not on this chart, but I want to say 82% of honors program students, they're full-time students. Well, they also work, they just take more demands on themselves, and they enroll them full-time. They consistently maintain higher cumulative GPA. You can see 82% of students in honors program, they have a high GPA, and I want to add that 20% of our students, they maintain 4.4 GPA, the perfect GPA, and it's very important for them, they can't afford a grade C, I know that, they're sometimes frustrated with that, they want to have A or B, they take B. We also have students who have a high graduation rate in the honors program, and I collect this data and compared this data with the college submitted data through the academic research program. Also want to mention that our students graduated, here in the last couple of years, we have graduates who attended Stanford University, two students went to Stanford University, one last year, one the previous year, and that's important, they only accept 24 transfer students from the nation, and we have every year students going to Stanford University. We have students who went to Cornell University, last year, we have students who attended and was accepted by MIT, we have students who went to George Washington University, and we track this alumni, it's so important for us to connect with them, and now we have chance to connect with them through Facebook.
Nadia, I am so happy you mentioned this point, because this is one of the reasons we started the honors college, was it used to be, our college, our board attorney, Joe Wang, went to St. Petersburg College and went on to Duke. Duke's a very prestigious university, our, there was a congressman before Congressman Young, and that was Congressman Kramer, and he went to St. Petersburg Junior College, and then went to Harvard University, I think most of us have heard of that, fairly new institution. But I think we need to, because what you just said about where our students have gone on to, I don't think we've done a, and this is not your fault at all, but we've not done a good job in marketing that, because as a trustee, I'm just hearing about that now for the first time, that we've had students go on MIT, and Cornell, and Stanford, and places like that. And I think this is one of the things, is that if I'm a parent, which I am a parent, and there's a chance that my kid was smart enough to go to one of these schools, but I can't afford four years, and I know if I can get my kid to come here to St. Petersburg College and go to the honors program, and that that could be a way for that student to go on to a Duke, or a Stanford, or a Harvard, or a MIT, that's an option which is tremendously appealing to me. And how do we, how do we let parents know that, and let students know that, or in high school? And how do we really work with those institutions more to really ensure that that student does have that opportunity? Because I know we used the West Point example, but West Point, they started again as a freshman there. We want a student to start as a junior, or at least a sophomore with a lot of credit hours, you know, so how do we make, how do we kind of formalize that part of the process?
That's for us, I think one of the ways we are going to, we plan to do that again, we mail parents. We mail a letter to the parents of students in the high school, those seniors and juniors graduating, and inform them about us. It is a wonderful communication with the parents of this, the honors college students. How we appeal this and address this message, we have a lot of technology resources to do that, we do it through our website, and our honors college website is linked directly from the homepage, that's very important. Sometimes we articulate, we should probably articulate this message more through the slideshow on the homepage, I'll be happy to work with our institutional advancement more, to make it more visible, I think this is very, very important to show students testimonials and their success, and they're all so ambitious, you can believe, they want to show, see their pictures on the website, so we can feature our students in the honors program more, and if you support this movement, I'll be happy to do so, because I think it's not enough, I agree with you. We have to, we have now those results, those harvests from the harvest season plan.
Nadia, I can see it now, I went, I'm at MIT, but I got my start at St. Petersburg College, and that type of testimony.
The only thing is Mr. Burke left out, the University of Florida. That's not an easy place to get into anymore.
You could include the trade school in Gainesville.
Gainesville now, or Duke? But what is interesting, last year, we accepted the students, and sometimes students come with their parents, and I like to meet the parents, because the parents were Yale graduates, and they're good students, so they have high, this is working, this marketing is working, maybe not in the way we see it with the honors boom, but a lot of students, a lot of programs in the state and in the nation, they are facing now the honors boom. It's growing, the programs are flourishing, and we have seven years now behind our shoulders, which is important, it's a great foundation to the program. So now, we are really flourishing, we are not even developing anymore, that's important for us, and we're ready to explore more marketing opportunities, and we need a little bit budget for that as well, because parents sometimes, they are not so involved in website promotion, they're more involved in direct management.
One last question on this area. Nadia, I said the question in advance, and I think, Anne, you answered it, but I asked about articulation agreements, and I really, to be quite honest, didn't understand the answers through some, the colleges aren't doing these as much individually, although I see, I get the newsletter from Miami-Dade, they seem to be still doing these articulation agreements, it's being done through some type of association, and is that superior to individual institutions making agreements?
Many of the institutions have articulations that are college to college, they're not specific to the honors program, their honors program is just part of that. And what Nadia found, when she began to research this, is that some of the colleges that have more of those articulation agreements, have, actually have an individual or department that deals specifically with developing these, and then when she went to the National Collegiate Honors Council, in talking to various other directors of honors programs and honors colleges throughout the nation, she found that a lot of them instead were doing letters of intent or by recognizing one another's institution because they are part of those national, regional, or state organizations, that the directors themselves have a lot to do with the students' transfer and what's provided to the students. In other words, Nadia would contact the director of the honors program at one of the colleges that our students were going to go to, make the recommendations, so it's more of a personal one-on-one with the other director of the honors program at that other college in regards to, you know, promoting our students' success, and we will recognize because we're part of those various councils. And so that seems to be the way more of the colleges are going now, in providing that transfer ability to the students.
I just found something recently, when you were looking at Miami-Dade, it's true, they are promoting on the website, they have articulation agreements, exactly, they have college to college honors as part of it, but what I have found out, that California, Texas California, have honors to honors state agreement, they were able to do that, and I think this is the only state that do honors to honors. And in the recent article I read yesterday, it says that Massachusetts is working on the same honors to honors agreement, and I am really applauding that, because that can save us a lot of time. By my communication, honors to honors directors, it's sometimes, it's time-consuming, I'm missing time with meeting with students and parents, so it's maybe a good movement, and if the board will express it at the Florida, Legislative Florida Educational Board, that we need the honors to honors agreement, that could be amazing effort and amazing support of our programs. And maybe we can also try to do it through the Florida State Council, that can be one of the good movements, we need to research more in what's happening. We are very strong, the Florida and Southern Regional Honors Council is the strongest in the nation, so we can have this movement, this motion as a suggestion, motion in the future, but also, did I ask?
Yes, you did.
I know, I have a very limited time, I'm looking at the time, and I'm looking at Dr. Furlong, who is showing me, just quickly, and I'll time, do you have enough time? We have a diversity in the honors college, we're proud of it, we're working with all the college programs, we have students from 25 nations, and we have, we are working more on bringing more cultural diversity in the program in the future. We work with veterans clubs and many clubs at each camp. This is really important for me to talk about, the honors research opportunities. This is a platform for honors students to be able to present, this is the stage we are developing. This, the idea of running the honors research conference came to us three years ago, we started it immediately, and we keep it annual. Students, it's a lifetime-changing experience for students, they all come to us, in the beginning, they don't want to present, they always don't, but when they do it, they're pleased, they're happy, and this gives them a benefit in the application to go further to Duke and Yale and other schools. They have to have undergraduate research experience, and we are, we are promoting it outside and inside the classroom, we work with honors faculty, we work tirelessly on that, and currently, I want to proudly announce that this year, we built the Undergraduate Research Society, URS, and started by the honors college students, Kenard Fekke, Kenard worked with Dr. Renaud, and this microbiology club, they work in collaboration with, with the Veterans Hospital, and they are studying the issues related to cancer research, so that's amazing things they are doing, we also have several very active engineering clubs, they work on solar panel installations, and students, again, they present. and they are studying the issues related to cancer research. So that's amazing things they are doing. We also have several very active engineering clubs, they work on solar panel installations, and students, again, they present. And I want to also point out that in each of your packages, you can find the recent honors college conference program. This program took place this February, on February 24th at Equity Center. It was a day-long event. You can see on the name of the conference, it's health and balances, academics, environment, and stuff through honors. This theme was chosen by students and faculty, and it was referring to the very important pressing issues of healthy form and health care in the country, and importance of that issue in students' lives. Students learn about how to maintain their lifestyle, their nutrition, their exercises, and not only when they attended the sessions, but we have organized, one of the features of this conference was the panel discussions. We have invited to the discussion prominent physicians from the county. We invited state legislature representatives, Janet Long was here. And we also had, you can see the panel, by the way, here on the picture. We had Dr. David Berger, Dr. Roberts, we had the Penous County Health Department Director, Dr. Klaa Rajaraj. We had Dr. Philmy Kater, who is here in the audience. We had Dr. Senter, representative from Gatsby's office. We had a total of seven physicians, two representatives and director of Penous County, who is also there. Physician, it was amazing discussion, we videotaped these discussions, and we are currently now editing it. It will be on the website for us to promote with quality presentations that we are putting together. We also displayed not only student scientific research and science-related disciplines, but we welcomed students art presentations, we welcomed sculptures, we welcomed their posters. And that's also really amazing opportunities for students. Here is a quick slide on the regional conferences we are attending. The conference, it's a large-scale student research conference, it's important. It usually has about 400, 500 presentations take place in different states in the region. And we were hosting this conference last year. Amazing, huge, tireless effort, four days conference. We introduced students from the region to our school, to our faculty. We had a reaction to the Dali Museum, we had special honors student socials, poster sessions. It was a very, very important event, and I'm very proud to report on that. And you have in your bag also the program for this conference. So please refer and look at the quality of this global solution through honors, 37th annual conference. Again, this is the slide, I don't want to focus on this slide, because I just mentioned the honors mentoring relationship between faculty and students, and opportunity to sign the honors contract. Outside of the honors curriculum is important, we are promoting that. And we have a piece of faculty interest in that area. We had, we worked with thirty, with students, we worked now with sixty, six contracts this semester, and we have, we work with thirty-two faculty, just on this independent study and research between faculty and students in the classroom. Service learning is a very essential initiative. We have put all the efforts in developing this initiative. Students in the program, they serve, it says here on the chart, at 2,500 hours our students put for the service learning project during this year. And we've worked with 27 nonprofit organizations to develop the service learning initiative in the school. But I counted yesterday, and we actually have over 3,000 hours, students looking into and putting into the service of the community. These organizations have permanent relationship with our office. I have a student assistant who tracks the records and paperwork, it's very important for the school. And some students think this course must be mandatory for all SBC students. And you can read that book in my presentation, which I actually agree with that book. Here is another very, very important initiative we have started in the beginning of the honors college development, and now we again gather some results. We have a pilot, wonderful pilot with college technology and management, where students have opportunities to participate in honors capstone seminar. There are more opportunities for us to develop and invest in the future, and we will be working closely with deans of the backboard and programs. Here is our membership, it's also covered by Dr. Cooper. Here you can see we are members of these three prestigious organizations, and we are members of this organization since day one, and that was very smart move on our behalf. And we're also part of the Florida Compact Organization, which is a state service learning group, and they provide us, again, guidance in developing of service learning and service in the community. Very quick overview of the honors college student consortium. It's the main voice of honors college students, active organization on the campus. You just received freshly printed the newsletter done by the consortium. And it still needs to be edited before we put it online. It's online newsletter called Extreme Media, which giving the homage to our slogan, Extreme Education, Extreme Media. And it will be available for everybody to see on the website. It covers all the students' events, archives of their accomplishments. And in this newsletter, you also can find how many awards our students receive in addition to those that have mentioned. Because campuses are giving academic awards to our students, we acknowledge them, and that's very important document I shared with you. Again, we are very technologically advanced, we try to follow our students' needs. And we use Facebook, honors college student comments, we use our website, we update it regularly. And again, we have a returning newsletter, which is amazing for us, we're happy to have that. Now, this is very exciting, can I have a couple minutes to show students?
No.
Okay.
I think, I think you're over.
All right, I am over. Okay, this is just three students who are amazing, they're quite cool. And I want to say thank you on behalf of the students. I'm moving to the last slide. Last slide is thank you, you see honors college graduates this year. They graduated with honors diploma, honors medallion, this event took place two weeks, our graduation ceremony. And we're thankful for your support, for giving a chance for us to speak on behalf of this program. I'm happy to bring it every year, if possible, give a brief overview maybe. So bring us most of the word, we're using it. Yeah.
I want to thank, this is an excellent presentation. This is, and this is, to start something from nothing is hard to do. And that's what we asked you to do from the honors college, because there was no honors college here. And you've been with it since the beginning, I believe, is that correct?
Exactly, I was founding as a director, I'm going to the directorship, I'm very proud of that. It's really interesting to develop from scratch, but I had a team. I did have a team, visionary team, Dr. Ferlong.
And I want to thank Anne. And also, I'm impressed that you were the conference chair, you didn't mention that.
I was chair.
That you're a conference chair for this conference, and that for your prestige.
It's me, yes.
I'm impressed with how much you've done. I didn't know all this was going on with the honors college, and I followed, I go to your lunch once a year. And I just want to say congratulations, excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Very nice. Psalms?
The chairman, this was unusual, that this is on here so quickly. We, this was a report that in the past has just gone from the chairman to the state. And the requirement changes here to happen to bring it to the board. We read the point, the chairman had already signed it, and it's not to go out. And we've adopted the requirement, so otherwise it would have taken a lot more time than another meeting. But Psalms has put this together, Jesse, Rajid, Brandon, sir.
And I had a team as well. So this is not just a Psalms recorded product. There are several people, as noted in the executive summary that I sent to you all, I noted some of the folks who contributed to this report. And there's many reasons to celebrate. I don't have all of the accolades from the honors program that Nadia has, but I want you, as board members and chair, as well as Dr. Ferlong, to know that this year's equity report is the best that I think I have ever had my hands to touch and complete. There are many, many opportunities in our report that we can celebrate, and I'd like to just point to a few of those. And I would also like to call Dean Rizup to talk about the success and the great strides that we've accomplished in the math area, and answer any questions that you may have. If you wouldn't mind passing on an updated report, we have a few changes that I want to note to the two of you. The chairman, and the chairman as well as the board members. And I'll pick up with something wrong, essentially.
The day that big book we've seen.
On page five in the report, the date there, I'm sorry, it's page six. The date I have noted that is May 11th is the date of adoption by the board, that is today, the 18th. If you all will adopt, and we far would approve this report. Page 55. And this page is still in the athletics participation by gender compared to student enrollment by gender from 2009, and 2009 and 10. We had answered there, that it was a no, that we were not in compliance. And when we looked at it again, and looked at the data above, we realized we are in full compliance. So I want to make sure that you all are aware of that change. On page 84. We noted another reason to celebrate such a great report this year. Item J, did the college achieve the goals as stated in the 2008 equity update report? And initially, we put no, but then we went back and we looked at the percentages, and we noted here that yes, the college did achieve its goals as stated in the 2008, 2009 equity update report. Other three minority categories in last year's report, all three showed an increase in the percent of employees with continuing contract. So we are moving forward, we are making great success in this area of continuing contracts with our employees. If you would give me a few moments to celebrate with you. I, when I get the data from Tallahassee, it's a combination of trying to sort the other thing. What it is, I'm looking at. And I, I'm so pleased to say to you all that with Jesse's help, he was able to help me. I'm a visual person, I'm not one who just get it, you just tell me, I'm kinesthetic as well. I'm writing as I'm looking, and what I am trying to decipher. So he came alongside of me and showed me a way where we could really show everyone the great, the trailblazing efforts that we have made in retention. And we put this into a chart, and I said, oh my God, this is fabulous. This is absolutely unbelievable. Based on where we were last year with our student retention for full-time or part-time, we have come a long, as they would say, a mighty long way. And if you would go with me to page 38, let's look at our full-time student retention. There's a chart there, on page 38. Our full-time black female students in 2007, 2008, 2008 or 09 academic year, 58% of black females we retained. And we're pleased to report, in this equity report, we can say there's 63% of black females we retain. If we go to our aesthetics, full-time aesthetic females, 57% 2007, 08, 2009 academic years, 57% of those students we retain. Today, as this report is on your, there before you, we're looking at 88%, 88% of full-time aesthetic females we retain. Now if you go with me over to page 39, at the top, we're looking at full-time male students. And these are the underrepresented groups, and you all know that equity is all about in terms of what we need to report to the state. So I'm pointing out these groups specifically. Full-time black males, full-time black male students, 2008, 09, 2008, 07, 08, 09, 47% of those students who came here, we retained. And we are pleased to report, very pleased to report, that in this report that goes forth to the state of Florida, after you've adopted it today, 59% of full-time black male students we are retaining. And to me, that is a huge success. And if we go over and look at the Latino aesthetic students, 49% in years 2007, 08, 2008, 09, and now we're looking at 61% of teaching those students. And the stories go on and on and on.
Yes, what in retention of the students, does this just mean that they will be coming back next semester? Or they have met all the academic requirements for the course of the year, and we know that they'll be coming back the next year?
We're looking at students who were here during that time, and came back, yes.
For the year?
Year-over-year.
Year-over-year.
Actually, it's basically.
And then those, and then that, this would also indicate the increase in more people coming to the college, more students coming to the college?
That's a part of it, absolutely. And we know the economy is driving a lot of this. When it's not that well, we see the increase in our enrollment. And I have to add this, that the new outreach for male, the new, I believe their positions that are coming forward, this is really going to have a greater impact. So I would expect to be a C greater increases among males at the college, I guess.
And just to clarify, this truly is year-over-year retention. So this is, they were there the first year, and we've gone back to see they were there the next year, and then we divided those two. So this isn't completely.
It's a full, it's a full year, not a semester, and then next year they'll be coming back.
Correct, year-over-year.
So you've seen a full year. Okay.
So it's probably, yeah, follow the fall.
Follow the fall, absolutely.
It's good.
How about completions, are those statistics in here anywhere?
There is a section, I believe it's the next section of the report this week, specific to completion.
Yeah, let's look at that. Was there any one particular you'd like to see, Mr. Burke?
Which page, which page is that?
Go to page 57, we got black student participation completion. It's broken down by ethnicity and race. We have the aesthetic males and females participation, total black student participation completion. And of course, you can see where those are really.
Page 57.
Page 7?
27.
Oh, 27.
27, 28, 29, 30, and 31. And it's broken down by AA degrees, AS degrees as certificates. And the way you would read this is across, for example, maybe, let's look at the. It doesn't matter, because they're all up there.
We can look at AA degrees. I just want to point out that completions are going to take us a longer time to impact. Some of the other metrics that we were talking about, in terms of success, retention, we're looking at year-over-year increases, we're looking at MAP keepers, we'll look at in a little while, how a lot of increases over the last three years. Completions are going to take us longer to have the same kind of impact, because it takes our students longer to complete our programs. But we can look at AA degrees, and we have those comparisons. And these are basically looking at from '06, '07, '07, '08, and '08, '09. And then we can take various groups and look at those changes. I don't know if there's something specific that you'd like to look at.
Well, again, I think I can point out, if you really wanted to look at males, which is really, I can't imagine that they're mostly concerned about. In the AA degree program on page 27, 2006, 2.14% completed. 2007, 1.75% completed in AA degree. And then in 2009, 2.2, 0% completed in AA degree. So we see those incremental changes we've been having. And then again, if you look at the AS degrees, black males, 2.37% in 2006, '07, 1.84% of a decline. And then it began to rise again in the 2009 year, 2.12%. So things are moving up, things are looking up, and I think these are reasons for us to celebrate. In addition to the retention area. So things are moving up, things are looking up, and I think these are reasons for us to celebrate, in addition to the retention area. If there are any questions about that, any questions for about retention?
Well, in some, I think we're making progress in some areas, we're not making progress in other areas. And, and, and I think it's a resource issue. I think, you know, we, you know, is our, is our college truly dedicated to putting the resources to help make this happen? Because to me, a fifty-nine percent retention rate for full-time students for a black male is unacceptable. I mean, that's, that's, the good news is that if a, if a black male student becomes full-time, I'm just shocked at this gulf between part-time and full-time here, the, a, a, there's a thirty-five percent retention rate if you're part-time and fifty-nine percent if you're full-time. The biggest gulf there is with black males. It's a twenty-four percent difference there, which is more than any other area that I could see in a quick glance here.
Correct.
But that tells me that we have to do everything we can, first of all, to help black males take on college as a full-time responsibility, not as a part-time, and then we need to get that fifty-nine percent way up, I mean, way up. You know, we should be looking at a seventy percent goal there, and, but we're not going to achieve it if we have, you know, increase overall first-time in college enrollment of minority male students from one point six to one point eight percent. Is that black males, I mean?
No, that is, that is.
That's, that's Asians or something?
That's the other minority male student population in our demographical area.
Okay, then that's fine.
The, that group is very.
So black males is going from, are goals from five point six to five point eight percent? I was hoping for a lot more ambitious goal than this.
Mr. Burke, you know, one of the challenges that we have had is the staffing and resources. And with the approval of the budget, we will now be hiring two males to help us district-wide with male enrollment. The other thing that you approved and under Dr. Furlong's leadership, we have a student success committee that is based, the charges to work on college-wide retention. We have several faculty, deans, student affairs folks, and that committee was just approved, I think, last month, Dr. Cooper, Dr. Furlong, that went forward. And with our strategic plans and initiatives, we also have a big goal in there for males. And so we are moving in the right direction. I think that the goal was very small because of the resources that we had at that time. But now that the program is being, you know, restructured and started again, I think we're going to exceed those goals and we'll be having more of an emphasis on our male students. We also have faculty members who come forward who would like to work with us and start some sort of support group, like a club or fraternity of some sort of, a group for male students college-wide. So I think we're headed in the right direction. But these goals were set before the, the new resources came.
And I know this is a state of law report, but can we maybe set a goal outside of this?
Absolutely, yes.
And, you know, let us know about, because I, I think we need to shoot high on this and put resources into making those goals a reality and, and meet those goals.
Our, our college-wide retention goal, which includes the male initiative, was five percent over last year's, you know, goals. And so we will be striving for that, that is currently what's in that plan right now. And so that's where we're headed. We're very proud and very excited and glad to have Dr. Furlong that resource and, of course, approval to be able to move forward.
Would the increases at Midtown campus and other places, downtown, Midtown special? I would also, I would tell you, I'd look to, I would want to see a different goal set. I mean, every graduation, every graduation, before I can sit down, Mr. Burke has counted how many African-American males are participating in the graduation. I know that does, that does not mean that those are the folk, the only folks that are graduating. But it is, it is very important that if we have these campuses and we're seeing increases, I mean, not only retain them, but we need to be able to recruit more people to come in. In this economy, I would venture to say that Miami-Dade and other, probably Tallahassee are up in minority males, black males in college. And we want to be a part of that trend, and I understand it was a resource issue. I don't think that would be the case before, because Dr. Furlong has dealt with that. And I, I will tell you that I have got the strongest commitment from Dr. Law on that. And so I want to make sure that we're right on track with what Mr. Burke is talking about. And, you know, we do need, not only retain these students, but we need to have a higher retention rate, because our students are going to take a longer time, sometimes to complete. And the longer it takes, you're going to have people that are going to fall off, because it's just like a business deal. The longer it takes to complete that deal, the less likely it is to happen.
And, and I do want to say that if you're seeing that trend already, the, the increase of minority males and male enrollment period, it is, it is sliding upwards. So it may not be as drastically high as Miami-Dade, but the trend is moving upward.
Mr. Burke, you may have your point, and you said this is a state report, and I think we need to do this, but I remember when Dr. Harper was president of family, he always tells, when I was a Tallahassee, you know, it's a small number. I mean, let's say we need to go from fifty to seventy people, you know, or whatever the numbers are. We need to set a real realistic goal for you, for you folks to see, if we're going to put two new people in there and then on the way program, there ought to be, whatever the number is now, there ought to be a dramatic increase in that topic that we're putting in position. So you need to plan back and look at that, and I think that's what Tom did, that this committee is going to do that. And we'll still have to force end results into this unless somebody changes the state form, but I think those, this will jump as well. But I, I do think we always needed to do a bit more, and then they pulled our number, pulled our resources away. And I think in the last six months, he's let us tap into auxiliary and a few things, and you're going to see it, John.
In addition to, come on in, Chair. I have Dean Riggs here with us this morning, and, you know, I understand exactly where you're, where you're going with this, and I appreciate that. And I know I've always had the support of the board to do exactly what you requested. One of the areas in the report that I think you really will be pleased to know is that the disparity gaps in the math area, we began to see that those are, those are very big. And I would contribute that to the support of Dean Riggs and plenty with the math bags area. So I'm going to just ask her if she will just point out a few of the things that they are doing in the area, and you can further that.
Yes, they're going to show up, I'm going to show the graphs, what math person wouldn't show a graph? If you can put the twenty-four and the ten thirty-three page up for everyone, please. We're doing this the old-fashioned way, but, yes. If you, if you, we're very excited about the math twenty-four results described in the, in the report. I, as you see that, look at the black percentage of complete, completers in our courses, it has gone, gone up significantly. And, and I believe that can directly be related to the Title III grant that ended in the fall of 2008. In the fall of 2009, and this graph is on page forty-seven, math twenty-four was raised to a four-hour class, which provides our students with more active classroom participation and more time on task. Studies show that this is what it takes for students to be successful, especially minority students. The disparity gap was reduced significantly over the last three fiscal years, and all three cohorts had increased, increases in the percentage of successful students. The difference in white percent successful and black percent successful went from negative twenty-three point forty-nine percent to negative nine point seven percent. That's a significant change. SPC has hired developmental specialists, implemented a math twenty-four practice exit exam and review, and added study strategies to the course with that extra hour. Students learning how to study and be successful in the classroom spills over into success in the other courses. And in a lesser way, it seems to have spilled into our NGF eleven oh six. But that statistical analysis of gap in success rate is affected by the low number of minority students who take this course, only about sixty black and thirty Hispanic students during an academic year. We can only hope that those students are going, have higher goals and are going into the, you know, like engineering or something higher, because they're in our college algebra courses and higher. We have named in the report the strategies that we have moving forward, thanks to Jesse for the graphs and also for helping us with these strategies. And I would especially like to point out that the math department now has a college-wide student success committee, composed of at least one member from each campus, who meet several times a year and focus on student success in general and closing the gap specifically. Some of these same faculty work with the Title III initiative, and moving forward, will participate in the developmental education initiative grant we begin to pilot in spring of 2011. SPC was one of six colleges in the state to receive this grant from the Nolan Melinda Gates Foundation. We are very proud of that, our success rates can only continue to climb in the future. Thank you. You can just run through these slides, you can also see here, we were kind of on a downwards trend, and now we're on an upward trend, which is really great in ten thirty-three. And then eleven oh, let's see, at math eleven oh five, the same thing, although our Hispanics were on a trend upward. We were on a little dip. And then in eleven oh six, you can see that at this point, the Hispanics have gone down a little bit, but again, we have very small numbers in that area. But we are, we're on the rise. Thank you.
Mr. Gibbons? My, my question is not for you to prove, it's more geared toward comment from Dr. Furlong. One of the things, since I've had a lot of meetings with, with Dr. Williams, I'm talking about minority outreach and retention and all these other things. One of the things that I thought was very interesting, I met with Dr. Wilson over at Stepson Law School. And I guess a growing trend at law schools now is to have coaches to help students through law school, because they don't want their students getting accepted and then not finished. So maybe that is an alternative that we need to be looking at if law schools are doing it. I think they do that at FSU as well, am I right? I think they're hiring these coaches or professors in a sense, but they're helping the young people to get through when they're in tight spots, not financially, but academically. Because they want them to be able to make it through these courses. So maybe that's something that we need to be looking at in terms of trends of how colleges are helping people to get through. They're hiring these academic coaches, I don't know, they call it academic coach, I don't know if we can do that, I guess, in a sense. Some of the things that Dr. Williams is giving in terms of recruiting and other things will help, but we also need to make sure.
We should look at what they're doing, but we also, we do a lot of this.
Yes, we do, we do a lot of that, is, is right. We have SLS, you know, we have in the SLS courses, the tutoring, the peer tutoring, and as part of our, and mentors and in the initiative that we are starting in the spring of 2011, we will have more of that as well.
But we can take a little while to do this.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, if it's a growing trend, we need to be figuring out what.
And we discovered when we started the upper division too, one of the things that they do in that group is, one of the advantages of their division is they survive intermediate courses, they survive elementary math courses and all, which means they got sort of a selected group already. But then when they, they take the higher level math or the higher level courses, they have two or three needs too. So they use a lot of their student activity money to bring in, you could call them coaches. They have problems in specific programmatic areas, and that was a new phenomenon for us when we started the upper division, so they had coaching in the upper division like that.
And basketball is not to demean or discount what they're already doing, but maybe there are specific skill sets that these people have that we need to look for to help these companies be successful.
Oh, go ahead, that's good.
On that same note that Mr. Gibbons brought up, I know a group from our college, I can't recall who, went out to Chaffee College. The Chaffee College, the group, who went out there, any of you all went out there? Out in California?
Oh, Watson.
Oh, Watson, right.
Have we adopted any of those programs that we, I thought we, more than one person went out there, I thought two or three went out. Have we brought any of those programs back, and, you know, I'm not, that's why we go out there, steal from them.
Dr. Cooper, I can, can definitely give you a report on, on their findings. Several of the findings we were already doing, but they did come back with some new things that, with resources, we could definitely use. I think that in the presentation that Dr. Renard and I, did you guys still pat?
Yes.
That Dr. Renard and I did, I was asked what would be one of the things that I would suggest we do if we had any funding? And I stated, you know, getting students, get student services buildings where everything is in one area.
Hundreds of my friends.
Not my mouth was big enough, I'm sorry.
Now, it's being recorded.
I'm sorry. One, one of the things that you had asked Dr. Renard and I was, what would be something that if we could dream, we could get that would work, that Chaffee has? You didn't know it was Chaffee I was talking about, but what they have is they have one building with all of their student services in one area, where staff are cross-trained, working in one area, the synergy and the help, and apparently that is one of the things that they do very well, that the students appreciate, because you're able to get everything done in one area. But at Chaffee, they also have a lot of specialized initiatives and programs, and we do as well, that, that we are doing very well. And they brought some Midtown ideas, quite a few Midtown ideas, Mr. Gibbons. And we are starting to implement some of those, we are bringing women on the way down at Midtown. We've enhanced the tutoring and the support services down at Midtown. But a great piece of that report was there. There's, there was also another piece of the report that we have not done, and that was very brilliant, is putting together a brochure of all the services that the college offers college-wide, what campuses and where they're located, so the students will know where we're going. Well, Jesse is already starting to work on that, we met about it yesterday, and so we are implementing some of those things that, that were in the report that our budget can sustain, and we can bring that back to you at another time.
Any other questions? Okay, we need our motion to approve this report, some. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Sal, and Jesse, and Dean Riggs, and whoever else was involved in that, thank you.
Board chair, would you just give me the liberty of asking for folks who are here? President Furlong, if you'd just please stand, I have to, I would start with our General Counsel, Sid McKenzie, please stand. Ms. Smith, my EAO officer, please stand. Sharon Gray, would you please stand? Dr. Hughes, would you please stand? Mark Strickland, would you please stand? Michael Keith, would you please stand? Denver, and, and, Marsha, would you please stand? I dealt with the letter, I mean, I could go on, I want you all to know that this is a concerted effort to put this report together.
I can see that, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Sal, for acknowledging all those folks, thank you very much. Other business, anything from you, Dr. Furlong?
I think we're in good shape, I agree, I appreciate your support. We had a fabulous graduation on May eighth, Tropicana Field, and I just want to commend and thank all of the staff who were involved in putting that great program together. As many of you know, as all of you probably know, we had Nicole Stopp, a graduate of SDC, who is a space shuttle astronaut. She was our commencement speaker, and it was wonderful meeting her and listening to her words. But thank you to everyone for putting on such a fabulous graduation. It's a, it's a great opportunity where we can showcase everything that's great about this institution. So I commend you and thank you on behalf of the board for a great, great graduation. Dr. Furlong is going to be with us at our next meeting, and Dr. Law will be here also. Dr. Law is starting on June the eighth, and we have the good fortune of having Dr. Furlong through the end of June. So we'll, he'll be tag teaming, I would presume, at our June meeting. But I want to remind all of you, and I'm sure many of you know, that we were, we are having a, a reception for Dr. Furlong on May twenty-seventh, here at the center here, at four thirty. And to thank him for his service and his tenure during this interim period, and the fabulous job, and the steady hand and great guidance that he has given us during this, these last six or seven months. And so I would encourage all of you, if you can make that on the twenty-seventh, to please make sure to come by and, and shake his hand and thank him for what he's done for us. So, Mr. Gibbons?
I would like to also just put that always, thank you, Dr. Furlong, for, I have to be honest, I, I, you have been very responsive, receptive, you've been a listening ear, and I think you've done a phenomenal job, that's the end of the present. a listening ear, and I think you've done a phenomenal job as the president of this college. And I know we're going to have a great president going forward, and Dr. Law will take this to our life, but you're exactly what we need, and I really appreciate you and your family taking on this task and doing such a great job. I mean, I have, and, and some of you may not get this, but anytime Evelyn Lynn says anything nice, Senator Lynn says anything nice about anybody, I get nervous. She has not anything nice to say about any educator across the state in terms of stuff. But I walked the halls this session, and I didn't go up that much, but every time I went to an office, Senator Alexander, and Senator Jones, and so many other people, everybody had the same thing to say, that we had a great representation, not just by our lobbies, but by you, that you were in there in the fight, and you were willing to compromise and make sure other colleges weren't hurt, but we were still, you know, your first priority. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate your family, Evelyn, to take this on. I know if I have anything to do with it, that going forward, you'll be a part of this college. I would love to have you back because I think, you know, transitioning, Dr. Law's going to need a lot of people to listen to, and he'll probably get more than he wants to listen to. And I just hope that you're one of those people that he can, he can lean on and rely on, and I really appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
We're going to have a couple more opportunities to do that, so I want to get ready. I, I really appreciate it, and I, I, it's been a really good time, and I do appreciate my family's part of this because I had to get permission. We had a lot of clients, but Paul was a pretty, Paul's enjoyed it as well, and it's been a good six months. And I was, I was getting ready just to mention Doug and Jamelle, but really for everybody. I was going to mention Doug and Jamelle because the night that the budget was finished in Tallahassee, Woodruff called me, and they were saying, you know, give them two or three days, and they'd have summaries. And I went into their office, and they already had put all the budget into our computer, and we were running scenarios the night that the budget was finished, and all across the college and, and all the other offices I could mention, Kay and everybody, it's just been just total support. Everybody knew we all needed to come together for a few months, and we did. And we're all excited about Doug. And next month, Bill will be the presiding officer on the staff side, but I'll still be here the thirtieth, and anything I can do to help is great in the long term, and that's, that'd be great if something works out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other items from? Okay, our next meeting will be June fifteenth here at the Epp Center. So thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.